Yes. Yeah, hey, tellers, all those who have been approached by the clerk to act as tellers tonight, please come forward and be sworn. We're almost ready to go.
Good evening. Thanks to everybody for being here. My name is Paul Samino. I'm your elected town moderator. I want to welcome you all to this special town meeting. I have been informed by our town clerk that a quorum of 100 registered voters is present, and therefore this town meeting will come to order. As your moderator, I'm responsible for the oversight and conduct of this town meeting. I am pleased to see all of you here tonight, especially those who may be attending town meeting for the first time, and I will do my best to honor your commitment to our town's good governance by proceeding along as fairly and efficiently as possible. We do not have the Girl Scouts tonight, but we do have the flag in the corner to my right, so if you would now please rise and join me.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Eight volunteer tellers have been appointed and duly sworn by the clerk. Should it become necessary to count undeclared votes tonight, they are David Schwartz, Sharon Shoemaker, Mimi Lutrell, Kevin Lutrell, Kelsey Lutrell, Benjamin Keys, Beth A. Rosenbloom, and Curtis Brownell. I thank them for their service. In New England, town meetings serve as the legislative branch of town government. Town meeting decides whether to appropriate money to run the town and considers whether to create, revise, or remove local town statutes known as bylaws. Southborough operates with an open town meeting, meaning that every registered voter in this hall can vote on all matters before the town meeting tonight. A warrant has been issued in advance of any town meeting for voters to be forewarned about the time, place, and substance of the matters to be considered. The warrant before us tonight is a white-colored document. It has a total of five articles to be considered. Unless otherwise determined by law or town by law, the conduct of town meeting is governed by the rules and practices contained in the latest edition of Town Meeting Time and Section 41 of our town code. Our past practice has been to allow non-registered voters into the hall at the start of the meeting. Typically, these people are non-resident town employees, members of the press, students from government classes, and the like. All non-registered voters must wear name tags issued by the clerk and will not be allowed to speak unless approved by the hall. The non-registered voters present tonight are Brian Ballantyne, Town Treasurer, Trevor Dillman, Southborough Access Media, Art Eddy from Traverse Landscape Architects, Karen Gallagher, DBW Director, Vanessa Hale, Assistant Town Administrator, Michelle Jenkins, Assistant Town Clerk, Ginny Kramer, Attorney to Ms. Houlihan, Heidi Krieger, Town Accountant, Tom Laflamme, IT Director, Teri Newman from Southborough Access Media, Christine Pinzoni, Trotter Your Staff for Lights and Sound, Mark Purple, the Town Administrator, Corinna Quinn, Town Planner, Mark Robidoux, Building Commissioner, Jay Tallerman, Special Counsel, and John Phelps from the Metro West Daily News. If there are no objections, we welcome these people here tonight. Do I have the consent of the hall? Please raise your hands. Thank you. Our bylaw requires me to define the bounds of the hall. Tonight, all of the seats in the auditorium, as well as the aisles in front of the rear columns, so rear columns and forward, are considered the hall. All voters must be within these bounds to have their vote counted. I won't belabor the topic of conduct and decorum tonight. I think all of us expect that we are civil, ladies and gentlemen, in our town generally and certainly in a setting such as this. Please silence your mobile devices now if you haven't already, and remember that nobody is permitted to place calls within the bounds of the hall. If you must place or receive a call, you will need to leave the hall and use your phone only outside the auditorium space. Finally, a few notes about our process. All presentations will be made from the podium on the opposite side of the stage from me. As we go through the warrant, original motions and other pertinent information about each article will be posted on the screen to my left. As is customary, your elected town clerk, Jim Hegarty, and your appointed town council, Aldo Cipriano, are on stage with me, while your elected Board of Selectmen, chaired tonight by Brian Shea, and your appointed advisory committee chaired by Adrian Peters are all sitting at tables down front facing you. All of us up front are registered voters, as are you, but that being said, it's good to remind all of us that the primary and prominent function of town meeting tonight does not occur up here. It occurs out there. Thus, as we proceed through each article tonight, any town meeting member can go to any one of the microphones, state their name and address, and speak to the article or ask a question. And all town officials will wait in queue to speak to an article, as do any other voters. Any questions should be directed through me. No one may speak until recognized that a microphone by me. This includes calls to move a question. The only exceptions to that are a question of privilege or a point of order. If you wish to raise a point of order, you still must come to a microphone to be recognized. If someone moves a question, I will determine whether there has been adequate discussion, and I may forestall such a motion for the time being. In the interest of moving things along tonight, I will be dispensing with the past practice of explicitly asking the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee for their positions on articles. Tom, can you put an example up? I just want to point out the content of what's up here. This happens to be the motion on Article One that we expect. At the bottom of that slide, you see recommendations. Selectmen do not support. Advisory does support. So you have that information. If you have specific questions about that, please go to a mic and feel free to ask. I will focus our discussion tonight, and by that I only mean that we, anyone wishing to speak to an article pro or con can do so until I feel that things are either getting repetitive or belabored. At that point, I will suggest that we proceed to a vote. I will remind you of the quantum of vote necessary to pass each article, for example, whether it's a majority or two-thirds or something else, and then I'll call for the vote. If I can gauge the prevailing vote from here, I will announce it, including declaring a two-thirds majority in those cases. If seven voters rise to question my assessment of a vote, or if I deem a vote too close for me to call, I will ask the tellers to come forward to count the votes. With that, I have examined the call of the town meeting, the receipt of the officer's return of service for the posting, and the return of the mailing. Under our rules, the moderator must read the entire warrant either at the beginning of the meeting or prior to the motion introducing each article unless a motion is made to dispense with that reading. Therefore, I move to dispense with the reading of the call of the meeting and the officer's return of service, and to waive the reading of the separate articles of the warrant. Is there a second? All in favor, please. All opposed. That motion carries. Let's move to Article One. Ms. Houlihan. No.
Is it on now?
Yes.
This won't be karaoke, I promise. Article One, Mr. Moderator, I move to discuss Article One, motion Article One.
You want to move the article as printed in the warrant? Why don't we start with that?
That's the first thing I need to do, right?
Yes.
Yes. I do move to move Article One as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? Okay, we have to formally put a motion on the floor before we can do other things, including talk about it, but we are going to first go back to Ms. Houlihan, who has prepared an amendment to her motion, and we need to put that on the floor before we talk about something that's just going to change anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to strike Article One in its entirety and replace it with the following language. And that language was distributed in the hall, and it should be up on the stage.
You've got to go to the last page, Tom. Okay, scroll it back down. So that motion's been supplied to the clerk in writing ahead of time, so it's properly on a, well, does it receive a second? Motion to amend. Motion to amend is a majority vote. Do we want to, I'll hear from folks on the floor if they want to discuss the actual act of amendment before we get to the substance, but I'm not seeing anybody at a mic for that reason. Jev, you okay? Okay. So, yes, John?
I have, John Butler, for Davis Road. I have a question regarding the proposed amendment. We received this here tonight. Has this been available? Is this the form that was, that we saw the recommendation from Advisory and Selectmen? Is it with respect to the amended form or the original form that those votes were taken?
Mrs. Shea?
Our recommendation is on the amended version.
Mr. Peters?
Advisory, the same amended version.
Thank you very much.
That's a good question, Mr. Butler. Okay, all in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by raising your hands. All opposed. That motion carries. Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've been instructed I have five minutes. So I first wanted to introduce my legal counsel, Ginny Kramer, from Blatman, Bobrowski, and Haberdy. She's been with the Attorney General's Office for over a decade in the general, in the Government Division, and had served, has served as town council for the town of Grafton. She's here and has provided her opinion from her firm. And just note from her firm, Mark Bobrowski, Bobrowski, my apologies, has actually consulted here to the town, to the zoning board, to help in writing their bylaws. He's known in the state as being kind of the godfather of writing the handbook for municipalities. So without further ado, I just want to say thank you because I know what a struggle it is as all of us parents or grandparents to try and squeeze a couple of hours out on a Tuesday night when there's multiple things happening, so I want to just say thank you for that. As I thought about that and what we have to do, it reminds me about being a parent. And so as a parent, when we raise our children, we raise our children setting certain standards and rules and boundaries and expectations. And in its simplest form, that's why I'm here in front of you tonight, to set rules, boundaries, and expectations. And this is a representation, this Article One, of the citizens' petition that hundreds of people signed at the dump and that circulated around town, because we noticed something that happened in the quorum and the rules and regulations on our town code, and we wanted to make a difference. So thank you for coming to help make that difference. My presentation will be brief. Next slide. Oh, do I do the slides? So what? Quorum of four, why? So a quorum of four has been part of a code forever, at least in my opinion, forever since 1974, and it's been part of what we've done here for Southborough and how the Zoning Board of Appeals, an appointed committee of five with two alternates, has operated for years. And I want to be clear and actually read the definition for quorum. The minimum number of members of an assembly or society that must be present at any of its meetings to make the proceedings of that valid. That's what we're talking about here is a quorum. Four people is simply better than three when having robust discussions and trying to have an articulate discussion and bring different concepts and thoughts to the conversation. That's what we're asking for, to maintain the quorum of four that's been in our code since 1974. The language proposed by the petition was recently removed from the town code, actually in March of 2018. It just disappeared. So for those rules and expectations and boundaries that we at the town have known and have operated, that noticing our ZBA has been operating under, those rules just simply disappeared in the only public format that we've known, and that's the digital town code. In fact, it was contained in the town code at Chapter 249, and the board historically had adhered to it without any problems resulting. The proposed quorum requirements is not a voting requirement. The language in the petition only proposes a quorum of four members be required to conduct business, and that is wholly separate from any voting requirements. And I just want you to think about that as I get to the conclusion of this. Allowing for us, the public, to be heard is our obligation. It's our obligation as town citizens, and again, for you coming, it means a lot. It means you want your voice heard, and we have the opportunity to be able to provide the rules, the boundaries, and the expectations of our board serving us. And the Zoning Board of Appeals is an appointed board of five with two alternates. That is helping to serve the town and make decisions in our favor. So what are we asking you to approve in Article One? It's very simple. We want you to maintain the quorum of four for the ZBA when they meet. We would like to allow for the proceedings to be very clear and allow for public comment, and we actually are asking them to submit for conflict of interest forms. None of these requirements that you are asking to vote tonight are different from what they've been doing for years, so there's nothing new here. We're just trying to maintain what we've come to be our boundaries and expectations and rules that we were operating by. So the suggested language in the petition, I've highlighted here and read what changed from the original petition that many of you signed. And so what we tried to do is just simply amend the language. We took the word transcript out and placed it with minutes. And in the bottom, we tried to modify the language so it wasn't so complicated, and we have mass general laws that have ethics provisions, and so we cited those provisions. I heard, I got the feedback from the special counsel, and I tried to adapt that language to modify it so it was practical, and we can enforce this policy as a town.
One minute, ma'am.
Thank you. So I just wanted to conclude by a couple of things tonight. So what you'll hear, special counsel will provide their opinion, and that opinion contradicts what I'm asking the town to do. And what I'm asking the town to do is what you've asked the town to do by signing that petition and coming here tonight, is to express your opinion in your vote and to allow for this policy of rules and regulations to be adhered to. So we'll hear in Part A that a supermajority requirement for quorum, that it's a change from established existing practice under which a quorum is only three members of a five-member board and illegal is drafted and applied. What you need to know is this is false. It's established and existing practice in this town for over 40 years, and it's been known to operate within ZBA with the five members and its two alternates. With only a few recent and problematic exceptions, our ZBA has operated with five members at meetings while having four at a quorum. It is legal. Special counsel is confusing quorum members present, present to participate with voting. And again, I asked you to think about that. Part B is this language regarding a personal interest, so it prohibits any ZBA member from acting on a manner with personal interest. The term personal interest is too vague and undefined to be enforceable. False. We think, we ask you as the town to vote and say is personal interest too vague. In our opinion, personal interest is distinct from financial interest, and it simply means that there exists an interest in either the subject matter of the application or relationship with the parties before the board that impacts a member's ability to be objective and consider information in an objective manner. And it makes business sense. Just makes business sense. Disqualification of members, each of these requirements is illegal, and I listened to that. So I changed that language, and that now discusses conduct and it brings in the words, wording of the ethics. So that concludes my presentation. I want to say as town voters, you have the opportunity to vote yes on Article One, and if it's illegal or there's any parts of it that are not right, it goes to the Attorney General, and the bottom line is the Attorney General can make that decision. Your vote is important tonight, and a yes on Article One is imperative. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, and I apologize for the beep. That was not intended to be audible. Ms. Fanaf, do you want me to come to you, or how do you want to, how did your board want to, you would ask to sort of be teed up in opposition here. So, I'm sorry? Not for this article?
No.
No. All right, let's go, then we'll, yes, Mr. Shea?
So as we, I had indicated at the pre-town meeting that we do have special counsel here this evening.
Yes.
And I would ask the opportunity for a special counsel for the same five minutes to present and discuss the points that he made to our board, which helped us form our recommendation.
Right, that was my understanding. So you threw me for 20 seconds, but yes, do we want to, so Mr. Tallerman, you can come forward, just need to grab a mic, introduce yourself. Well, I think we'll give them the same real estate that they had.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the opportunity. My name is Jay Tallerman. I'm special counsel to the town on a variety of matters, mostly land use matters. I've been asked to comment on Article One. I was asked a few weeks ago under the original version, and I wrote an opinion and shared that with the town, which was subsequently shared with the planning board and made public. I raised four principal concerns with respect to this article from a legal matter. There were additional practical concerns, but there were four principal concerns from a legal perspective. The amendment, I'm pleased to say, resolved two of those legal concerns, especially with respect to the latter portions regarding board member conduct. Those are good changes, and I applaud the petitioner for being responsive to our memo. However, there are two remaining legal concerns. The first is the last sentence of Section B, which reads, "No member shall hear or decide an appeal in which he or she is directly or indirectly interested in a personal or financial sense." There are for two reasons this requirement There, for two reasons, this requirement is not legal. The first reason is that the ethics laws essentially cover the field for ethics. We certainly hope that all board members comply with the ethics laws and we certainly hope that all board members refrain from acting when they would be in a conflicted state. However, a zoning bylaw cannot tell someone what to do when the ethics laws themselves don't tell them what to do, in this sense. The ethics laws prohibit you from taking certain actions, but they can't decide for you, nor can they give the power to a fellow board member or a member of the public to decide for you. In other words, your ethics requirements are personal in nature and a board member can continue to sit at their own peril, and we would hope they wouldn't, and that they would get advice, but no other member or member of the public can tell them not to sit. That is, the bylaw would intrude on the province of the ethics laws by requiring that. The second element of this that's illegal is the notion of personal interest. In a small town where everyone knows everyone, the term "personal interest" simply is undefined. The ethics laws in Massachusetts govern only financial interest. There's a memo before you from the petitioner's counsel that suggests an analogy between laws governing lawyers, which is inapplicable, or laws of the state of Connecticut, also inapplicable. In Massachusetts, the ethics laws center solely around financial interest. And to suggest that a personal interest, as decided by a fellow board member or a member of the public, could prevent you from sitting is not cognizable under the law and as a bylaw, it would intrude impermissibly on the ethics laws in Massachusetts. The second issue, main issue where I have a remaining legal concern, is with respect to the quorum. There's certainly nothing wrong with requiring a supermajority quorum where it's consistent with law or where it's not inconsistent with law. So many zoning board applications require four members already, variances, special permits, and appeals. That's fine. You can even, while it being somewhat impractical, require a supermajority of four people for more mundane matters such as meeting to go over a plan or to discuss potential items that don't come to a vote. That is still legal. What is not legal is applying this to an area where the state law only requires three. And in Massachusetts, that applies to Chapter 40B. Now, you heard previously that quorum is different than voting. It is different. I've been doing 40B applications and representing towns for two decades. 40B only requires three votes. To suggest that you could stop a 40B application, which is the most municipal unfriendly form of application out there, by saying, there's only three people here, so we simply can't meet, is just not going to fly with the courts and could subject the town to significant liability. Second, 40B allows an applicant, a developer, to simply waive that requirement. So if a zoning board showed up with only three members, the applicant could simply demand a waiver of that requirement because it would affect the viability of their project. So it is simply either practically or illegal or legally inapplicable to Chapter 40B projects. I know there's been a significant amount of discussion about 40B projects. The one thing as counsel to this town I would want to avoid is a protracted legal battle on a minute procedural matter. If the town chooses to combat a 40B project, it should be on the merits and we shouldn't be engaged in spending a lot of municipal resources defending a bylaw that, in my opinion, would not be sustained by the courts. That's all I have, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll go to the microphones if someone wishes to be heard on this. Mr. Butler.
John Butler for Davis Road. I have several different comments on this. First of all, it's my belief that boards which receive legal advice, as in this case the Board of Selectmen has received legal advice, should themselves present their summary of the, of the reasons for their decision to this body rather than turning the microphone over to counsel for that purpose. Because there's a longstanding sort of tradition that is also ensconced in legal ethics that lawyers basically should communicate with other lawyers. And in this instance, the, the citizens of our town who are, who've hired counsel should distill and report to us because we are not under obligation to, let's suppose that any legal counsel to the Board of Selectmen says, well, this would be illegal. You are not obligated in any way to bind your vote by such a statement. It's, we are presented with policy differences here and we need to make a decision based on what we hear, but none, your vote one way or the other is not, can, cannot be illegal. You need to make up your own mind about this. We each need to make up our own mind and vote the way we think is correct. Now, with regard to that, there is nothing that I see here that if the claims of special counsel that we've just heard were correct, there's nothing here that wouldn't, if it was, was illegal and special counsel is correct that some pieces of this are illegal. If that is the case, there's nothing here that simply wouldn't be crossed out or struck down by Attorney General review subsequently, which is required. So I don't think we need to worry about any of these claims that some parts of this are putatively illegal based on what we've heard from one counsel. The other thing lastly I would say is that I've read the, read the report of counsel to the citizens' petitioners. It seems to me to be well reasoned, sound, and worthy of our support. So I urge you to vote for this as it stands. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Butler. And just before we go on, I do want to make clear that your original point about whether counsel should be speaking is a, is a good question. It's one I thought about for quite a bit, but he is special counsel in the stead of our town counsel, who we hear from a lot in these meetings. And on that basis, I thought it was proper. I stand by that. I want to, I'll give you a second chance. I wanted just to have Mr. Cipriano briefly explain why that is.
My principal responsibility currently is representing the Zoning Board of Appeals in the town of Southborough in two Superior Court cases, one land court case and also a case before the Department of Environmental Protection. One of the acute legal issues in one of the Superior Court cases is basically enmeshed in some of the language that's contained in the warrant article. Because of that, it was my own independent decision that that would appear to be conflicting. Not a conflict of interest per se, but conflicting if I had to give substantive opinions to you on that basis. So because of that, I respectfully deferred and asked the selectmen to get a special counsel. So that's why I'm not speaking substantively to this issue.
Mr. Butler, do you?
I just wanted to say that my point was not at all to imply that moderator had some procedural error in allowing counsel to speak. I, I think it's, I think your, your decision was correct in that regard. I, I was merely saying that I think that the best way for this body to deliberate is for us to hear the opinions of other voters who have either elected, who are members of the Board of Selectmen or the, or the Advisory Committee, rather than, rather than the appearance of a, of a more important opinion being given directly by a counsel when each member of this body needs to make up their own minds to decide how to vote and cannot be told by any attorney to anyone how they should vote. It's each of us to make our own decisions. I think you're, you were correct to allow it, but I think it's not the best way for this body to deliberate.
Fair enough. I'm going to remind the, the selectmen and the advisory committee that I do want you to stand up if you're looking to get in the queue. Mr. Shea gave me a signal when Mr. Butler got up. He is next in the queue. You guys would have no way of knowing that, so Mr. Shea, please, you're next.
All right. So, Mr. Butler, just to respond to your comment, and I don't disagree with it, and in defense of our board, our first opportunity to meet with Mr. Tallerman was tonight at six o'clock this evening. And it should have been at 5:30, but I was on the pike in traffic for an additional 30 minutes. So, and I think that speaks to, to this whole process, trying to undertake a change of this magnitude by a citizen petition and a special town meeting. I mean, there are tight time constraints that come into play with special town meetings. We were not able to, the planning board was not able to advertise a public hearing for this until two weeks ago. We had the opinion in hand from special counsel. At our last meeting, special counsel had a conflict. He also represents another municipality that had a town meeting that night, so he was unable to come and meet with us. So while I don't disagree with you, the reality is, you know, we've only had an opportunity to meet with him since six o'clock this evening and did not really have the opportunity to meet, flesh out the, the comments that he had offered and deliberate those and develop a, a full opinion on that before tonight. So, so that's the reality. I don't disagree with you, but that's the tight timeframe that we were living with.
Okay. Mrs. Barron, you were going to be next, but I'm going to come over here now to Ms. Gillespie.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, 78, Southville Road. I have two questions. I know we're trying to streamline this, but I guess I glanced away from the screen when you put the vote of our selectmen and advisory, and when I look at the warrant, it says a town meeting. If it's appropriate, I'd like to poll, you know, if it was unanimous, which way they support or don't, and if it's not, can we poll them? Because I'd like to know.
Sure. Let, so we'll put it back up. Selectmen not support, advisory support. Go ahead and ask your question to whomever you want to address it to.
Our, I'll offer, our board's vote was three opposed, one in support.
Can we ask who voted which way?
I was opposed. Mr. Schifrin was opposed. Ms. Faniff was opposed. Ms. Brascio was in favor.
Okay. And for the advisory, can I ask the same question?
Advisory, we, seven members were present earlier this evening and we did discuss it at previous meetings as well. So we'd not, it was a meeting repeated, so we spent a lot of time on this. Our vote was seven present, seven in favor.
Thank you.
And I want to say the basis on that was the same in the sense that if there were issues on the legal side, then those would be corrected and subsequent to the process as it goes through the state to Attorney General. So seven to zero.
Thank you. And my, my second question, or my second point was, I was going to make that point. I have faith in the Attorney General to get it right if we get it wrong. And secondly, the concern over prolonged legal battles if they have three members and the proponent wants to take it to court or make us change, say that, challenge it. Well, we have a five-member board with two alternates, which equals seven. It seems to me that in most cases you can get four and that we have great reliance on the chair of the ZBA and that if he knew he didn't have four, he could simply cancel it, the meeting, and forget about having any legal problems. And secondly, it's very rare that they don't have other issues on the table that they would need the four for anyhow. So, not so anyhow. I think it's, I think it's reasonable to expect they could get four members. So I'm supporting this.
Thank you. Over here, sir.
Howard Rose to Bantry. I have a legal question. This was a 1974 law that, or whatever it was that was changed in March of 2018, but allegedly there was change previous to that. It wasn't changed on the town code that we read. Was it changed at the state level and do we have any proof of that? Because it's not legal till the Attorney General changes it. Was it changed past 1974? And do we have anything from the Attorney General's copy that says that? Because otherwise, we should be still on the 1974 law, period.
So, go ahead.
I think you know, sir, that that's part of what the litigation pending in the Superior Court is about. But what was found during the pendency of dispositive motions was that the code as incorporating rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals was incorrect in that a set of regulations, rules and regulations, had not been codified. They had been properly filed with the town clerk's office, but they had not been entered in the miscellaneous section for rules and regulations. Those don't go to the Attorney General, as special counsel has indicated previously. Bylaws go to the Attorney General. Rules and regulations are simply incorporated into a municipal code.
Not sure I understood that, but thank you. Forgive me, I'm not aware.
Well, now, you know, in fairness, you asked if, if the
I did.
1974 is still in place because the other things hadn't gone to the state and you just heard they don't have to.
I was, that's fine. I was looking for if there's a documentation, documentation that could be showed tonight and apparently we don't need that. My other question, I guess, was for your special counsel. I believe in the Park Central, we heard from Mr. Monchar, our 40B expert, that there was a quorum of three requirement, but that was only superseded if the town had an existing law. So if the town had a four, that superseded the, the 40B requirement is written in. I'd like someone to speak to that if they can.
Yes? Please.
To answer that, the Chapter 40B relaxes a lot of laws and bylaws and it requires only three. And so you can't put a wall up of four under Chapter 40B. It is very specific that only three are required to approve anything. So it could not be stymied by having a quorum requirement locally of four. The, the 40B statute exists to supersede local bylaws that might provide more restrictions on the type of housing that 40B promotes.
Respectfully, that's not what we heard from the 40B expert. As people have said, I don't want to repeat, this can all be solved at the Attorney General. I would encourage you to vote for this and let it be solved there. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Healy, you were next, even though you're in the same line.
Those people were before me. I'm happy to go, but.
Well, I'm, I'm not, it's not necessarily ping pong. Go ahead.
Okay. I, a couple of things. Number one, I think this is a good idea.
Marty.
Oh, Marty Healy, 8 Upland Road, Southborough.
Thank you.
I think the, I think the bylaw is a very good idea. I disagree with the notion that a town cannot have stricter ethics rules than the state. That's a baseline. I mean, it's like the federal government passes a law, the states can have more restrictive, they just can't have less restrictive. So I don't think there's any issue at all that, that a town can, can enact stricter ethics laws if it, if it chooses to. The ethics laws at the state level are a baseline. The personal part of the bylaw, if, if the idea is to make a statement here and to, and to pass this and it feels like there's a, there's support in the room for that, that's great. I, I think the personal word in that statute is going to be a problem. It's not well-defined. You could define it and I think you have a chance to pass muster, but personal interest is, it, it doesn't have a legal concept to it and as a result, putting it in the bylaw, I think you're going to run into problems. So if we want to make a statement and give a chance that maybe it'll get passed, that's great. And the AG will have the final word, but if we want to get it passed tonight and not have to do it again, I might think about taking that out. The quorum, I, I, I think that, that even if Chapter 40B, sort of the flip of what I said earlier, if, if 40B says you need three, then, and you can't have four, then that'll carry the day for 40B. But four will carry the day for anything that isn't affected by 40B. Again, it's, it's, a, a town can have something more restrictive than the state requirement unless the state says this, unless the state has a lower requirement. So I don't think that's a problem at all. I think it's, I think quite frankly, counsel is flipping it on its head that we can be more ethical if we want to be and we can have higher standards if we want to be. We just can't violate specific state provisions. I think seriously about the personal part of it. I don't think that's going to pass muster at the state level. That being said, the AG has the final word. And it's not illegal, it just won't be legal. Nobody's, nobody here is doing anything illegal by voting for this article.
Thank you down here, ma'am. Down here, ma'am.
Regina McCullough, five General Henry Knox. Um, I wanted to hear from Marnie, or her attorney, if she read what was given by counsel and made accommodations on two of the four parts. I wanted to know why she, or whomever chose not to do something different with the other two. In addition to which, I'd like to know, based on what was just said, do you wish to make an amendment to, to, to get rid of the word "personal"?
Ms. Houlihan.
Marnie Houlihan, twenty-six Clifford. So, um, thank you for the questions. I think at this point, um, not to confuse, I think it's the simple purpose is to keep it as-is, so I will still move that way and let the AG make the decision if they wanna strike that personal interest. I think we would move forward, um, just to be expeditious on time. With regard to, um, I did have counsel opinion, and why we didn't change those two pieces is based on my legal counsel and guidance that I received, that it wasn't illegal, it is a, um, kind of an ethics standard, and whether or not the AG decides we should keep it. So, it was just really trying to maintain what we had, so not necessarily changing any language or adding anything new. Does that address the question? Thanks.
Thank you. Right down here.
Hello. Uh, my name is Michael Robbins, uh, forty-seven Deerfoot Road, and I'm an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals. Um, the zoning board met and, tonight, and voted for nothing to oppose Article One. My personal, uh, my personal opposition to Article One's first part of the quorum is based on my belief that without a quorum, that a forty-B application would be able to be constructively approved. And what that means is, once a forty-B application is filed, I believe it's a thirty-day timetable to have an initial hearing. And without that initial hearing, the forty-B project, uh, can be constructively approved. And for me, I've been a part, this is now my second zoning board that I've been part of. Just tonight, we only had four voting members. If any one of us had a conflict of interest, now we're down to three. Now, we don't meet that local quorum requirement, and we've caused a problem. Just tonight, we have, what, just over a hundred people for a town of seven thousand, and we have a quorum. The quorum requirement, to me, to, to broaden that, um, from just a practical standpoint, in Grafton, they were short members for years. No one would sit on the board. Right now, we've got a, an opening on our board. People move out of town quickly, life happens. I think the additional quorum requirement, um, would cause more problems than it would fix. With respect to the ethics, I think that the Mass, Massachusetts laws on ethics are really clear, and it's just a redundancy. Really, my personal opinion is it's, it's adding on to what is already there. And if there's a, a conflict of interest, that member should recruit, recuse themselves. Thank you.
Mrs. Barron.
Louise Barron, eleven Sadie Hut Lane. I wholeheartedly support this article. I also thank Ms. Houlihan for all the hard work, and I would very much like to hear her attorney speak on this. Um, Mr. Tallerman has spoken, and now I'd like to hear Ms. Houlihan's attorney.
Do you have a question?
A specific question? Well, if she would like to rebut any of the items that Mr. Tallerman said, that's fine.
Okay. Well, Ms. Houlihan is advised, and she can go to the mic. That's out of order. I, I, she's aware of that from before we got started tonight. So, thank you anyway.
So, we can't hear her lawyer?
No.
Why is that?
No, listen, I'm, I'm not gonna...
It's a question!
I'm about to answer it.
Oh, okay. I, I really would like, we, we heard special counsel, and now I'd like to hear, um, her counsel that came in and did a lot of work on this, and I think as citizens of this, voters of this town, we need to hear another side. This is very important to us.
Yes, and, um, I don't think there's any question about the, the, um, division of the sentiment expressed so far tonight. Okay? I'm gonna go over here.
Desiree Asselbeekian, one thirty-seven Woodland Road. I did submit an amendment on Article One with the town clerk. Um, if, may I be permitted to make a motion for my amendment?
You certainly may.
Okay. I move to amend the main motion under Article One by striking out the last sentence of Section B. Just before a second, just to remind people what that is, that sentence that I'm asking to strike is, "No member shall hear or decide an appeal in which he or she is directly or indirectly interested in a personal or financial sense."
Motion's been made. Is there a second? It's been seconded. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, as some other people, I believe Mr. Healy, uh, said it very, very nicely, I would concur with his sentiments. It seems that the, it's quite clear that the personal, directly or indirectly, personal interest is very hard to quantify. I can have a personal interest with my neighbor, so does that mean if I'm a member of the ZBA, I can't sit on, on my neighbor's, well, neighbor isn't good because that might be a direct, a butter conflict of interest. But if it's somebody on my street, or somebody who my children play together, the personal piece seems to be very troubling for me in supporting the totality of the article. Also, too, I will, I will note that the financial interest is, again, clearly specified by conflict of interest laws under Mass. general law, and under the own petitioner's article, under the zoning board of appeals, um, conduct, Section B clearly says that members, as part of their conduct requirement, needs to file any necessary conflict of interest forms with the town clerk or board of selectmen before, if they have conflict. So, if the, the whole personal and financial piece is what's holding people up here, and what has a legal argument for holding people up, I think it should just be removed. Everything else is covered under Mass. general laws.
Thank you. Does anybody wanna be, does anyone, anybody wanna speak to Ms. Asselbeekian's proposed amendment?
Davis Perry, twenty-two Main Street. I want to speak in favor of the amendment, and I would ask the proponent to support this, because I, I think it goes to the, one of the gut issues which the attorney has spoken about, and we can remove this. We can remove this. Um, I think it's fairly obvious that it's sort of, uh, it's going to be turned down by the AG, probably. Why don't we get rid of it? And then we still, we have, uh, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of what we want, just by striking this, and we, we sort of remove, uh, some threat from the AG. So, I mean, I just suggest the proponent support this amendment. It just clarifies it to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with regard to the amendment itself?
Yes.
Who said that? Come to a mic, please. Go ahead, sir. Name and address, please.
Shubu Mukherjee, fourteen Cleveland Street. So, conflict of interest is something we learn in every board I've been on, and a personal interest that, you know, you will approve your neighbor's appeal, that is a conflict of interest, in my opinion. And the other thing I wanna point out is that when legal counsel today stood up and said, he's gonna offer his legal opinion, and then he turned around and said, "Oh, by the way, in a small town, it's gonna be very difficult to implement this." So, I wanna understand where he draws the line between legal opinion versus practicality of an opinion. And it is very important, when I was listening to him, he is confusing the two, and we should be very clear that we should not be confusing the two. And as a matter of legal principle, I'm not sure he has delivered it, because he's confusing practical aspects, that this is a small town, and therefore it's difficult to do this. That is left for the town members to decide. The second thing is, I'm opposed to this amendment. We should have the personal interest clause, and as Ms. Houlihan has clearly shown, there's legal precedents behind this. Thank you.
Mr. Dennington, uh, you wish to speak to the amendment or to the...
No, I'd like to speak to the, to the underlying, uh, motion that's on the floor, not the...
All right. Anybody...
And I don't know if the amendment was ever seconded.
Yes, it was.
Okay. I take that back.
So, I'll take, anybody who has anything new on the amendment? Is that you, sir?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Scott Raylander, six Molton Road. Um, it occurs to me that, um, most of us have a personal interest in a lot of matters around town, so, um, if, let's say I'm in support for Park Central, uh, I could use the argument that because you live near it, and it's going to affect your traffic, you're personally affected. So, I think it can be construed the wrong way, and it could be a, a bad thing. So, I, I move that we, or I support that we strike that.
All right. So, the, the motion on the floor is to amend the article as shown on the screen. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of amending the article, raise your cards. Hold them up. You gotta have tellers for this. Tellers, please come forward. When we go to the vote, once the tellers have come down and begin to walk up the aisle, we will just sit in place and raise the cards. Nobody has to stand up like we always used to have to. Jim, let me know when you're ready. The clerk has reminded me that for this, for this count, you must be seated in a seat with a card in the air, not standing. So, if you're standing in the back, come down to a seat, get ready. All right. All in favor of the amendment as shown on the screen, please raise your cards. Hold them up until the tellers get a chance to come through. This is for the amendment, in favor of the amendment.
Three.
Three.
Plus me, that's four.
Okay.
This is four.
All right, Jim, grab them up. So, listen, we, we are, the cards in the air are in favor of the amendment. We need a total on that from all the tellers before we even think about no votes. Rest your arms. Uh, all opposed to Ms. Asselbeekian's amendment, please raise your cards. Jim, are we done counting? Good night. All right, you can lower your cards. Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Matt.
Oh, Matt. Nice to re-meet you. Andrew Dennington. Yeah.
Brad and Curtis.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, on the results of the vote on Ms. Aselbikian's amendment, total of 221 votes, 94 in favor, 127 opposed, so that motion to amend fails. We're back to Ms. Houlihan's original amendment, and I'm going to come over here to Mr. Dennington.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Andrew Dennington, 10 Carolyn Terrace. And Mr. Robbins has already delivered what was the vote that the Board of Select, I'm sorry, the Zoning Board of Appeals took this evening. I'm also on the ZBA, so I want to speak concisely to a couple of points that I don't think have been covered yet, and also respond to some of the questions that have come up. Mr. Rose asked a question about what did the Attorney General's Office do with the 1974 law? And it was referred to as a law, and I think it's understandable why it was referred to as a law because it was in the town code, but it actually is, it does, it never enjoyed the force of a bylaw, a legislative enactment by the town meeting. The, what was in Chapter 254, something like that of the town code, was an enactment by the Zoning Board of Appeals in 1974, which then was later superseded by other, a new set of regulations by the ZBA later, and I'll get into that point. The second, Ms. Gillespie raised, I think it's a fair question about, well, if you have five permanent members and you have two alternates, which actually is an advantage the ZBA has above the planning board or an elected board, it can actually be more flexible. It can't be that much difficulty to get four people together in one room. And that's a fair point for shorter hearings, you know, special permits, variances, building inspector appeals, where already under state law, you're going to need four votes. So there's already a de facto four-person quorum requirement for those. But what about the 40B? And that's the whole issue that really has, I think, brought people here today, is frustration about how Park Central was handled, and for some people, the ultimate decision that was made. So I think it's really worth looking at how this would actually affect that situation to determine whether it's actually a, really a good piece of legislation. So, how did it come to be that when the ZBA approved the 40B comprehensive permit application to Park Central in 2016, that there were only three people sitting on it? It originally began with, I think there were six people at the time that the board, a matter began in 2014. It was so complex that it continued into 2016, and during that time period, at least two people moved out of town so they could no longer sit on it, and one of the members recused himself. So that's how it came down to three. And the legal opinion that Ms. Houlihan's attorney has provided does say, and I think Mr. Tallaman's interpretation was the same, that it is a, it is a requirement of state law that only a majority vote is required on that. Okay, so only three votes could approve it, but if it came down to three, it would need to be unanimous. So, you know, if the sentiment of town meeting is, we want to avoid a position like that, either be, I think because it's unwise to have only three people decide a matter of that significance, I think you seriously need to consider how this would have played, how this exact same scenario would have played out if instead there was a four member quorum required. So, take the exact same sequence of events, and at the point where the board drops from four to three, the applicant would take the position, I want to keep going. This hearing, which the ZBA was required to open within 30 days of my filing this, it has to continue, and the fact that you only have three people, I'm fine with that because all I need is three votes anyway. If the town was to say, whoa, 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 that violates our own local town bylaw, we need four, here's the issue that I don't think, that the proponent's attorney hasn't really answered is, how does that play out? If that had been the scenario back in 2016, would the permit have automatically been granted to the applicant through a constructive approval? Because the way the 40B law works is, the developer is automatically entitled to this permit unless they give continuances to allow for extensions of hearings, and unless the board acts in a timely manner. So I don't know the answer to that question, and I think that, I think there's a lot of just public frustration about how the matter was shared when it was in 2016, about the ultimate decision that was made, and I think the remedy there is, ask the Board of Selectmen to appoint people who share your points of views to better reflect your opinions. It's not going to change anything that happened in the past. I think the point that I'm making is, I would ask people, they certainly get the sense in the room that there's a lot of sentiment for it. I definitely think it's very rushed. We just had the unusual situation of, because this amended language was offered on Saturday morning, and then the applicant's legal position came out yesterday, 4:50 something PM. So because this is so compressed, the Board of Selectmen held its meeting in Trotiere to take a vote on this at 5:30. The ZBA held its meeting at 6 o'clock, actually 10 minutes or 15 minutes late because I was stuck in traffic, too. The advisory committee also held its meeting at the same time. You had all the boards simultaneously holding their meetings in elementary school classrooms because this is so rushed, and I would just ask people, don't vote for this just because it feels good, you want to bash the ZBA, you're upset about Park Central. Don't do it just because it feels good, okay? Because if you actually want to think about, how do we prevent a situation like that in the future? No one has really answered that question, okay? And Mr. Butler, the point you raised about, you know, I agree that the town's lawyers, special counsel's position is, it's not gospel just because he says it, but, and the other opinion was, the other opinion is, you know, was a pretty good opinion, too, but neither of them, if you read them carefully, address this constructive approval threat, which is really, that's the more significant practical impact that this could have. So I would ask you to, don't vote for it just because it feels good. Think about it. I'm not repeating myself, so please vote no. Thanks.
Yeah, and I'm not going to tolerate that kind of thing. Everybody gets to speak as long as they need, as long as we're not repetitive, and we haven't been so far. We have had quite, quite a bit of sentiment in favor of this article. I'm going to ask if anybody is at the mic in the queue who wants to speak in opposition to this article. I'm going to suggest that we move to a vote at this point.
No, I would like to speak, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Ms. Shinkus?
I was up here for 45 minutes.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Stephanie Butler, 10 Presidential Drive. Mr. Moderator, I move to vote, please. Move the question to vote.
You're moving the question. I think this has been debated thoroughly. I think the sentiment is very clear. I think this is tailor-made for moving the question. I'm going to allow that motion. It has been seconded. It requires a majority vote. All in favor of moving the question, please raise your hands. Thank you. All opposed. Okay, that motion carries. So we are now prepared to vote on the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is Ms. Houlihan's amendment that was made way back when she first got up at the microphone, before her presentation. So, we have to approve her amendment. That'll take a majority vote, at which time then we will vote on the substance of the article, which will take a two-thirds.
Will there be no more public comment, Mr. Moderator?
Not on this article, ma'am. Please sit down.
Not okay. Censorship.
Okay, yeah, I was being extra careful. He's right. The clerk just reminded us that we did vote to approve the amendment at the time, close to the time that it was first made. So now we are ready to vote on the substance of the article. It requires a two-thirds vote because it is a zoning bylaw change. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Let's do that again very quickly. All those in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. I declare a two-thirds majority. We're ready to move to Article Two. Is Mr. Perkins here? Go ahead, sir.
Chris Perkins, 1 Terra Road. I move Article Two as written in the warrant.
Okay, the most, the article is written and the warrant is on the screen. Does that receive a second? Second. Go ahead, sir. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. This is a simple citizen's petition article. The warrant article states that the Zoning Board of Appeals must obtain approval from town meeting for changes they make to their rules. The ZBA will still be able to change their rules. This warrant article now requires that they bring their rule changes to town meeting for a vote. The ZBA is an appointed board. They have the power to decide variances from zoning requirements, special permits as specified in bylaws, and administrative appeals of decisions related to zoning bylaws. With the power the ZBA holds, the board must be held to the highest standards. In 44 years, the ZBA has changed the rules only four times. Clearly, the ZBA rules change infrequently. The ZBA also has regulations regarding their fee schedule. It is completely reasonable to require changes to this fee schedule to be approved by town meeting. For example, when the town needed to change transfer station fees, it had to come before the town meeting. There's no reason that the ZBA should be any different. It is important for us as citizens of our town to be aware of the rules that govern our ZBA. You do have the opportunity to voice your opinions at the ZBA public meetings. However, voicing your opinions and having a vote are two very different things. By supporting this article, we can ensure that the changes to ZBA rules are known and voted at town meeting so that we can be confident that the rules are in the best interest of our town. Thank you.
Anybody want to speak to Mr. Perkins' article? Please go to a microphone. Ms. Gillespie?
I guess I won the race. Freddie Gillespie, 78, Southville Road. Again, I just wanted, I know where to look now, and I see the selectmen did not support, neither did advisory, but can I ask, was that unanimous? And if not, what the vote was?
The vote of the Board of Selectmen was unanimously opposed to this article, predominantly for the reason that it's too burdensome to have to go to town meeting for all rule changes that the ZBA may have. They currently are required to have a vote of four out of the five members of the ZBA to change the rules and regulations. So, we did not feel that it was necessary to have any and all changes that they may come up with, including filing fee changes, et cetera, take up time at a town meeting.
And advisory?
Mr. Peters?
I'll save you the why, but our vote was rejecting it 61. In other words, there were seven members, one in favor, seven against. Six against, sorry. Seven total, six were against it, and one in favor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Sir, you're next.
Mr. Moderator, David Williams, 25 Meadow Lane, also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The board, oh, sorry. The board met earlier tonight, as Andrew said, and the vote was unanimously to not support the article. I think the board feels that this is a detail that's perhaps a little bit too refined for a town meeting. Other town boards would not be subject to having any rules and regulations approved by town meeting, so unanimously do not support the article. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here, sir.
Shubhul Mukherjee, 14 Clemons Street. I had a question. I don't know who this is for, if it's Mr. Perkins or, so if, if this is not passed, can the Zoning Board of Appeals overturn Article One as has been approved by the town just now?
No, that's a town law.
As, without going to the town meeting?
So, what town meeting just did in Article One was enact a bylaw. The ZBA does not have the pow, I mean, I'm just speaking, I'll go to special counsel if you want, but the ZBA does not have the power to reverse a bylaw on its own volition.
Thank you.
Do you want to, that's a thumbs up from special councils. Yes, ma'am.
Desiree Aselbikian, 137 Woodland Road. First, and perhaps Mr. Hagerty, the town clerk, has this information. How many appointed boards do we have in this town? By everybody, appointed boards. Open space, Main Street working. Open space, Main Street working group, personnel board, DPW planning. How many are there?
Although it seems to change on a daily basis, it's somewhere on sixty-five, sixty-eight, somewhere in that range.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. So we have six, let's just say sixty-five appointed boards in our arsenal here in town. This article aims to subject just one of these boards to having to have approval of town meeting for their rules and regulations, even though Chapter Forty-A, Section Twelve of Mass General Laws allows them to promulgate their own rules and regulations to be able to work productively to do business for the town. All sixty-five appointed boards need to work productively to do the job for the town. This is a terrible precedent. This is something that again targets one board out of sixty-five that are appointed, and I would urge the good people of this town meeting to vote no on this article.
Thank you. Over here, ma'am.
Elizabeth Whitney, twenty-three Blackthorn Drive. I just want to thank Mr. Perkins for putting forward, this forward, and it sounds like it's, there are a lot of things that come forward at town meeting, including the pay structure for the transfer station, and I think that with a board that has so much power, that to just make sure that the town, people in this town actually are for the, some of the votes that they make, seems reasonable, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
So actually, I, he was next, Mr. Butler. Mr. Rose.
No, it's okay. Mr. Butler, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Rose. No, Mr. Rose, go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I'd like to disagree with Ms. Aslubekian. I think this sets an excellent precedent that any board that is not elected, that is appointed, should come under the same standards. I think this is just the start of where we should go. I think this is an excellent place to start, actually, as the highest-ranking, not-elected board that has the most power of the town. I think they should be held to a higher, higher standard to start. I believe there are other boards that actually need to follow this precedent, and I'll ask the town clerk, I guess, to confirm that, but I would ask you to support this. It comes to town, I think it was, four times in the last seventy-five years, or whatever it was. I don't think that's much. I don't think it's much of a change, and I think as voters, we should have the right to control that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Butler?
John Butler, four Davis Road. I, I don't think that we need to have exactly the same rules for every single appointed committee. Some of them have a great deal of power, and as we've seen, can have a great effect on the, on the community and, and potentially make decisions that get a lot of people very concerned. This is certainly a board that is most in that category. And I don't think it's unreasonable, because of the special nature of this board, that this body might want to tighten up with respect to the discretion that the board has, particularly when it seems that this discretion to change the rules is only, is only used at sufficiently long intervals, that, four times in forty years, if that's correct, that bringing it back to this body would be so terribly burdensome. I would, I would remind voters here that when we approve budgets, you have this chance to stand up and hold budgets that amount to a hundred dollars if you want to. There are many minute items that, because of historical reason, come before this body. So I, I think that if you are concerned about the operation of the, of the ZBA, and you kind of want to keep an eye on it because of the recent history, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And I don't see that a case has been made that somehow this would be, even if somewhat exceptional, that it would be so burdensome that we couldn't, couldn't perhaps have this be a, a sound reaction to something that's gotten the community very concerned. So I think if you want to vote for this, do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Over here.
Karen Hanlon Schimkus, Lindbrook Road. I'd like to remind everyone sitting here tonight that this meeting is your meeting. It's no one else's meeting. This meeting is all about home rule. You get to make the decision, no one else, not special counsel, for one side or the other. That said, Mr. Perkins, I don't know if you saw Special Counsel for Ms. Houlihan's opinion regarding Article Two, and in it, I'm quoting, "Nothing in the language of the statute would make the town meeting approval of changes to ZBA rules illegal or even inappropriate." Moreover, our understanding of the two thousand seven update is the ZBA's own amendment process spanned four or five months. There was nothing in that update, or later update, that was time-critical or couldn't wait for town meeting approval. I just want to assure this audience that you bet your last bottom dollar that we checked, double-checked, counsel was hired, who was out of the Attorney General's office, she spent a good part of a decade there. Everything that you passed tonight, congratulations, before I was so rudely interrupted, was rightfully and correctly done. So everything has been checked, double-checked, triple-checked. So I'm unable to comment on the earlier article, but if you have any questions for me later, please come see me. Thank you.
Mr. Dennington?
Andrew Dennington, ten Carroll and Terrace, from the zoning board of appeals. So just, I understand Mr. Butler's point that there are other, there's other kind of minutia that's voted on at, at town meeting. So just as a kind of a preview of coming attractions, you know, if this law had been in place over the last ten years, the things that would have gone to town meeting are, for example, in two thousand eleven, the ZBA took a vote on whether to change its rules and regulations. And by the way, I would, I don't know how many people have actually read these rules and regulations. They're pretty, they say very little. They're, you know, one page, they're just a very skeletal set of rules and regulations. It changed the tenure of the chairperson from like a July first, it changed it to July first to June thirtieth, instead of something like, you know, a couple of months later, to reflect that that better timed things on, based on the election of people to the Board of Selectmen in order to make appointments. So you could take that up at town meeting and have a whole discussion about that, and it'd be interesting to see where they would go, but I think one of the other things which is on the agenda for tonight is ways to speed up the town meeting and get more people interested in attending. I don't think having that type of, requiring that type of minutia, this go-to-town meeting is gonna help. And then finally, I just want to address any concern or suggestion that's been made before, that the ZBA has been doing things with its rules and regulations that are incredibly significant over the last couple of years. So again, that, the change we just made to the quorum requirement, I think really kind of takes care of this whole issue, based on...
Someone has a point of order? Go ahead, Mr. Dennington.
Okay. Just briefly, I think that the vote that was taken on Article One kind of obviates the need for Article Two, and just to be clear, that the most recent set of amendments that the ZBA made to its rules and regulations in February two thousand and seventeen made no change to the quorum requirement. There had been, the existing set of rules and regulations which were in place were a set of rules from two thousand seven, which had been amended in two thousand and eleven, that also had no quorum requirement. So any suggestion that the two thousand seventeen amendments were to change the quorum requirement or anything like that are just, are just wrong. So I just wanted that to be noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here, sir.
Thank you. I'm Jonas Lindon, third Ninety Flag Road, respectfully, Board of Selectmen and advisor, as well as fellow residents. So as people have pointed out, the ZBA is an appeals board, so it does have very special powers. Now, most of the other sixty-four boards are not at that level. So for any changes to its bylaws, I think it's very, very appropriate that we, as the town residents in town meetings, review those changes. Fellow residents, this article needs to be supported, and I move to a vote on this.
No, we, we don't, we don't move votes off comments. That's a separate, that's a separate comment. I'm gonna hear from Ms. Aslubekian, and then we may get to that.
Desiree Aslubekian, one thirty-seven Woodland Road. As I'm hearing the discussion, I actually have, I think, a point of information. I'm trying to gather what this is going to mean in practice.
You have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
So if this, if this by, or, motion passes tonight, it becomes a bylaw. The ZBA, anytime they want to change their rules or regulations, would have to come to this body, have an affirmative majority vote to change the rules and regs. Does this also mean that because this becomes a bylaw in the town code, that any citizen can file a citizens petition to change the rules and regulations of the ZBA? Or does the ZBA have to promulgate that chain, that change first? What is the sequence of how you change the rules and regulations?
I'm gonna ask special counsels to address that.
I would say no. The zoning board has the exclusive obligation and right to make their regulations pursuant to the statute that was referenced previously, and the fact that it has to get approved here is the only additional requirement. I don't believe that this would open up town meeting to make their own suggestions as to regulations.
Oh, thank you for your answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Marguerite Landry, one thirty-four Deerfoot Road. I move the question.
Very good. Question's been moved and seconded. This cuts off all debate, requires a majority vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now we, we move to vote then on the substance of Article Two. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Please raise your cards, all those in favor. All opposed. We're gonna have to have the tellers, Mr. Clerk. I know what I think. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You must be seated, but please raise your cards. This is a two-thirds vote. and hold them up. You can put your hands down. Thank you. We'll have a result here in a second. Total of 221 votes. 140 votes yes, 81 no. Motion fails. 63.3 percent. Article Three. Ms. Brascio.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Southborough Code, Chapter 174, entitled "Zoning," by striking from Section 174-10G the text contained in said section and inserting the following text in place thereof. I quote, "Any person aggrieved by the action of the planning board on a site plan approval application may appeal said action to the court of, to a court of competent jurisdiction in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 17."
Does that receive a second? It's been seconded. Ms. Brascio.
Mr. Moderator, with your indulgence, we have a presentation we'd like to give for this.
Okay.
Good evening. I am Lisa Brascio of the Board of Selectmen, and I'll be representing, presenting, excuse me, Article Three with Mimi Lutrell from the Planning Board. As you can see in front of you, we're gonna keep this very brief. We have four slides. Article Three changes the appeal avenue for a planning board major site plan approval from the ZBA to judicial review. Why make the change? Number one, it makes this section consistent with the rest of the zoning bylaw and standard zoning practice. All other planning board action is appealed directly to judicial review. As I had said at a prior meeting, I have actually looked at now 145 other towns out of the 351 in the Commonwealth, and I have only found three that appeal to ZBA. All other towns appeal directly to court and have been upheld by judicial review.
The Citizens' Plan or Training Collaborative recommends that site plan appeal go to judicial review per Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 17. And the collaborative is a collaboration of six entities: UMass Amherst Center for Agriculture and Food and Environment, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Massachusetts Association of Planning Directors, the Massachusetts Association of Regional Planning Agencies, the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Planning Association, and Mass. Audubon. And this collaboration does training for planning board and zoning board members throughout the state. And they advise against the inter-board appeal process, which we currently have.
Number three, Town Council also recommended this. At the March 6, 2018 Selectments Meeting, Town Council added that the judge in court pointed out how highly unusual this bylaw is, and that if we strike it, it could be perceived as best practices by court and neighbors.
It eliminates pitting one board against another. There have been two appeals of major site plan to the zoning board of appeals, one in which resulted in a very contentious situation in the town. This change in the bylaw would eliminate that from happening again.
What requires site plan approval? Non-residential development, modifications to existing developments that fall within parking and loading or landscape regulation, change in use or reactivation of a facility that has not been used for a period of two years, over 55 developments, adaptive reuse of historic buildings. Major site plan adds 2,000 square feet or more of floor area or would require 20 or more parking spots. Minor site plan is less than 2,000 square feet or less than 20 parking spaces.
This change only applies to appeal of major site plan approval. It doesn't apply to building a home, which you would get a permit from the building inspector. It doesn't apply if you want to put up a sign, although site plan review also looks at signage. It's within the context of a larger project that triggers site plan review, not just the desire to put up a sign. Appeals of building inspectors' actions will still go to the ZBA, as they always have. This will be no change there. Minor site plan review, any dispute arising from a minor site plan review, or any plan not receiving unanimous approval from the Site Plan Review Committee, which consists of department heads, is referred to the planning board for review. So that will not change. And I will call your attention to the report that the planning board put out in our support to bring this article back before town meeting, and our Chair, Don Morris, will speak to that a little bit later. Thank you.
Actually, it's very important for people to understand why this article is back, or the substance of it is back, when it was considered and rejected in April. So, Mr. Morris, can you speak to that, please?
Thank you, Don Morris, on the Southborough Planning Board. Chapter, Mass. General Law 40A, Section Five allows for a bylaw which had, has been unfavorably acted upon at a town meeting to be reconsidered by the town meeting within two years after the date of such unfavorable action, if the adoption of such a proposed bylaw is recommended in the final report of the planning board. So, we've talked about this, which the old, it's the old Article 32. It's now Article Three for tonight's meeting. We've talked about this at our planning board meetings since the regular town meeting. But it wasn't until last night that we formally created or approved the final report of the planning board, which is required by this 40A, Section Five. So, we submitted this to the Selectmen this morning for distribution. It's on the website. There were copies made. I hope, if you have it, I'll just quickly go through it. The presentation that we just heard covers some of these items or most of them. However, because we took a action last night at our public meeting, the planning board voted unanimously, five to zero, to recommend the adoption of Article Three and for reconsideration. By doing that, we're allowed to bring this article forward within the two-year period. And the following reasons are, support our recommendation. First of all, if it's not clear, I'll say it. Site plan is a, not a simple process. It's very complex, and there's no way to make it simple. We had six reasons for trying to bring this, recommending that this article come forward tonight. Number one, the site plan approval process is a complex process, requiring a view of a wide range of technical information, including plans and documents regarding existing and proposed site features. It requires coordination with other town departments and the engineering review consultants. The process also requires a thorough understanding of the zoning requirements and applicable state and federal regulations, and the ability to interpret and assure that the submittal is in compliance with regulatory requirements. The planning board considers it inappropriate to appeal the planning board's decision relative to site plan approval to another town board with less experience and expertise in site plan review. ZBA currently lacks the formal published process or procedure for managing a planning board's site plan appeal. Number two, the current process creates opposition between town boards. It creates a problem when pitting two town boards against each other. We should not have a bylaw that one town board overrules another town board, as well as causes conflict within the county, conflict within town council representation. Town council cannot represent both independent boards that have conflicting opinions over a decision, leaving one board without representation, or alternatively, requiring selectmen to provide additional special counsel. Number three, the vast majority of cities and towns in Massachusetts do not handle site plan appeals by advancing to the ZBA. We heard Ms. Selectman Brascio elaborate on that. Number four, it's been stated that the current process provides a low-cost, no-cost option for residents and small businesses to appeal and allows for an easy second chance. While the planning board's site plan approval and conditions may not satisfy all the proponents and abutters, the process requires an extremely thorough review and places great responsibility on the planning board to meet zoning requirements, proponent and abutter needs. We feel that an appeal to the courts is considered a neutral and experienced jurisdiction. The path to appealing all planning board decisions except for site plan approval is to the appropriate court. This proposed bylaw change would be consistent with all other Southborough Planning Board procedural appeals. And then, this may, we put the sixth one in here because we weren't quite sure if the other five were strong enough. The former annual town meeting, Article 32, was heard toward the end of the second night in the annual town meeting with lower attendance and failed by only two votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Mr. Stivers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sam Stivers, 7th Presidential Drive, a member of the Advisory Committee, former member and chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, speaking as an individual advisory member tonight. I have great respect for Ms. Lutrell and Ms. Brascio. I'm usually on the same side of the issues with them, but unfortunately, tonight, I'm on the other side here. I have two issues of concern here. One is that I see the basic idea of what's being proposed is a problem. I didn't hear much conversation about the people that I'm interested in supporting with this one. For example, if a development is put in next to your house, neighborhood, or whatever, I'm interested in a way for someone who's aggrieved by a site, a site plan decision to be able to get another shot at making their case in a local board, a board that knows local issues, has, has a relatively quick cycle process, relatively inexpensive appeal cost, and you don't have to hire a lawyer to go to the zoning board to appeal. And I think that's worth something. And frankly, I don't mind being different from other towns in the state by giving people another shot at this process, because these are important things. If you've had developments go in near your house, I think you need to have a very substantial opportunity to state your case, and if you're aggrieved, get another shot locally by a board that, again, knows local conditions. So, again, basic idea I'm concerned about. The second piece is a structural piece, where in fact, the appeal process is located in two places in our zoning code. One, in the place where we're talking about, Section 174-10G, which we want to amend here. Another, in Section 174-25A1, and I'll read the relevant part. It says, "Any person aggrieved by any order, decision, or failure to act, believed to be in violation of the State Zoning Act or this chapter, including the action of the Board of Selectmen relative to a zoning permit or a site plan, may appeal such action or failure to act to the Board of Appeals." And some other stuff follows that, but that's the relevant part. So if, in fact, we pass this proposed amendment tonight, we've now got zoning law that says A in one place and B in another place. And in fact, in the past, the original language says site plan appeal to the zoning board in two places, so that's consistent. So I think we're opening up a real risk here by having inconsistent references, and maybe that's a function of the fact that this has been a hurry-up process. I just, I saw the planning board's report today, so I think not a lot of people have had time to look at this and think about it thoroughly. So it seems to me that it's a mistake to rush ahead with this when apparently there's a conflict here. A couple other points. The concept of having the ZBA do something that they don't normally do. In fact, the ZBA does site plan for 40B projects. I was on the zoning board. I've done it as a zoning board member. And yes, planning board is the one that has the primary expertise in this area, but planning board gets to weigh in on those 40B projects as well, so the zoning board is not doing it alone in that process. And it seems to me, again, that having somebody with local, who knows the local issues and can do the job quickly for an appeal, it makes a lot of sense. Let's see. I guess that's the main issue. So I think you need to have another chance, and I think you need to have a consistent zoning bylaw. And I think what we have in place today works, and I would urge you to vote no on this warrant article. Thank you.
Ms. Rosenbloom was next.
Hi, Beth Rosenbloom, 5 Strawberry Hill Road. I just stand in complete agreement with this motion. I would urge everybody in the hall to vote it. It's very clear. I did want to stand up because, for those of you who may remember, I spoke against Article 32 at the last town meeting. I'm not meaning to suggest that you're all sitting there wondering what I'm gonna do tonight, or that you even care. But I did raise a point of law, a little esoteric, it probably went over everybody's head. But for those of you who are wondering, what is Betsy Rosenbloom thinking? I'm perfectly satisfied. I think Ms. Brascio and Ms. Lutrell have done a great job. Kudos to them and to the planning board. I attended their meeting last night. Kudos to Mr. Dennington, the Chair of the ZBA, who did all the initial research, which he shared with me back after town meeting. This is sound. And as for the point that not too many people do this, I have no problem with this town doing something different than the other 351 cities and towns, if it makes sense. But in this case, and I've studied the issues since town meeting, it is rare, extremely rare, for any town to have this kind of inter-board review. And given the history in this town, and the fact that your planning board is an elected board, think about that, the planning board is elected by you. Do you want those decisions second-guessed and appealed to the ZBA? I do not, and I stand in support. Thank you.
Mr. Dennington.
Andrew Dennington, 10 Carroll and Terrace, from the Zoning Board of Appeals. At the risk of jeopardizing its chances of passage, I want to let the town meeting know the ZBA voted in favor of it tonight. And I want to congratulate, I think the planning board made an excellent presentation. And I also think that Mr. Cipriano deserves some recognition, because he's actually the one that really originally spearheaded this as kind of a prophylactic measure to prevent these types of conflicts years down the road. So I think he also deserves some recognition, because he was the one that was originally behind the effort last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gillespie.
Freddie Gillespie. I'm curious why advisory has no position. Can I ask the Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peters.
It was, we did not have enough votes to pass it, but I will give you the vote count. Article Three- Article three, four in favor, two not supporting it, and one that abstained. So if you were to look at the majority vote, you can read it, but of course, our bylaw is five. We have, you know, we have to have a vote of five in order to pass it. So in this case, it's quite interesting if you look at what happened with the ZBA, but we have to have five passing votes. But it was actually, as I said, four, two, and one. So four in favor, two opposed, and one abstention.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say I support this article. I followed along what happened in the appeal to the planning board, and I don't think we ever want to see that sort of a mess again, so I support this.
Mr. Morris, I'm inclined to let the others go, but if you have something as an individual, please.
No, I'm an elected planning board member. I'll speak as that.
Well, let's have Mr. Butler go first then. Thank you.
John Butler, Four Davis Road. I just want to point out the notion that two boards disagree and conflict and look at the same things is...happens all the time. And here in town, in different...there aren't direct analogies, but I can assure you that in the decade or so that advisory committee worked to bring down the cash balances and the Board of Selectmen fought tooth and nail about that, that if the Board of Selectmen could have voted to eliminate the advisory committee's review, you can bet that you would have a unanimous vote during those years. And it happens over and over again. I mean, just look at the screen in front of us, right? Selectmen support, advisories review the same thing. In this case, for some reason, they don't have opinion. But it...all throughout the town, we have one board reviewing that of another board. They're not direct analogies to this one, but the notion that there isn't give-and-take and conflict between boards and two boards giving an opinion on the same thing sequentially or at the same time, happens all the time. And so we shouldn't pretend that, oh, this is unique in that regard, and sometimes they fight tooth and nail. So I think that if you think this is good on the merits, I mean, it's just not such a unique situation to have boards looking over one another's shoulders, and lots of times, we think it's a good thing. We want two boards looking at it. Thank you.
Mr. Morris.
Don Morris, Planning Board. We heard a previous speaker say several times regarding keeping it local and the term "another shot." Well, if we think another shot at a board's action is appropriate, then why don't we do it for all the other boards? Why don't we, if you get a ruling from the Conservation Commission, have another town board to go to for another shot? Same thing with the Board of Health, for example. If you don't like what they ruled, is there another...should we create another board in town where they...the locals can go for another shot? That's part of the problem is that this is unique, the only situation in town where somebody gets another local shot.
Now, seeing no one else at the mic, I will call for a vote. This is also a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article three to amend the zoning bylaw, please, in your seats, raise your cards. All those opposed? Okay, I declare a two-thirds majority, and that article carries. Article four, Calander Field, Ms. LeValle.
Article four, I make the motion that the town of South Row vote to borrow and appropriate the sum of $248,000, $248,300 for capital repair and maintenance at Calander Field, including the design and construction of drainage improvements on the field, around the field, and on the hill that abuts the field to the east, repairs to the field's grading and sodding, and improvements to the field's irrigation and parking lot surfacing.
Does that receive a second? Okay, Ms. LeValle. And please introduce who you have up there as well.
Yeah, this is Arthur Eddy from Traverse Landscaping. He was the consultant...sorry, he was the consultant who completed the study, the facility study, which I'll speak about in a second for those who may not be familiar. Oh, okay, you know how to use this? Okay, sorry. Thank you. All right. All right, so again, this is an article that was at the annual town meeting. So for those who were there, you'll have to spare me a minute or two where I just want to make sure those who may not have been there at least get a quick elevator speech on the background of what is driving this particular project. So again, the intent of this article is to bring forward recommended repairs on this particular recreation facility as identified within something called the facilities master study, which I'll speak about in a second. In general, lack of drainage on most of our fields, including Calander, and the inability that we have as a town to rest our fields, has contributed to a current suboptimal state of those fields. So by completing these repairs and others within town, we're going to be positioned to start an appropriate cycle of resting our fields when needed and ultimately maintain the quality of the assets of the town. And for those who may not know, Calander Field is a nicely located field on Calander Drive with parking on Route 30, and that's on the east side of town after you pass the Causeway heading towards Framingham. So again, I need to go quickly here. For those that, again, were not here, a facility study is exactly what it sounds like. It's a study that looks at all of the existing facilities in towns, whether they be fields, tracks, gyms, looks at items like drainage, demand, usage, and most importantly, it puts together a series of recommendations and opinions of probable cost on how the town should move forward to address not only the issues but opportunities. Again, we had not had one of these completed in some time, since I think it was 1999, and so therefore, we were missing a very key component to being able to build a capital plan for the town. So we got this study. It was completed in 17, and it exposed that we had a lot of issues to address and primarily around the state of our track and fields. And again, one of the key items that came out of that was that we were not in a maintenance cycle as a town. A maintenance cycle, very simply, is that fields should be maintained on a yearly basis, but then every four to five years, you should be taking those fields offline and letting them rest, letting them rest and do some additional maintenance to ensure that you're maintaining the long-term value of that investment. And South Row doesn't do that, nor can we. And so the commission took all of this feedback and all of the possible projects that were presented in the study, and we started building a plan, a plan with the priority of getting the town back onto a proper maintenance cycle. So the reason why we're back here tonight, Calander Field, which we'll talk about in more detail in a second, was a key effort in the first phase of the project that we talked about that evening. But what happened was that evening, there were some additional questions raised, and I think it caused some confusion on what could and could not be done to repair the field, especially in the terms of some...in regards to some drainage issues, which, again, we're going to talk about in a second. So quite simply, the reason why we're back tonight is that we can now feel like we can address some of those questions, and we would like to just revisit this project with the town to consider to put into the plan. So what we thought might help, something a little bit different, is Art, again, and Art was keying...was completed the study that I mentioned before, is just to walk everybody through the project, talk about what the opinion of probable cost currently includes and the work that we think that needs to be done.
Good evening. Again, my name is Arthur Eddy. I'm from Traverse Landscape Architects. I completed the overall master plan, but we also addressed Calander Field, and I want to go quickly through the project so that there's a quick understanding of why Calander Field is important. One of the things that Calander Field offers is parking, which is here, offers parking for the field. The field itself is enclosed with residential slopes around it, so from a safety standpoint, from a safe standpoint for kids to play on, provides a safe surface, they're not crossing roads. And additionally, it's also a scale so that there's wide enough to play for a wide range of athletes, from your youngest athletes up to your older high school athletes, even to adult leagues. So this field is important to your overall athletic complexes because of that. One of the things that have come up is that this was originally part of the original cottage lane development, and the part of the cottage lane development, Carriage Hill development, is that this was part of an overall drainage process for the entire Cottage Lane. Carriage Hill Lane Development. What happens is currently, you're rising up to a parking lot that is currently above the athletic field, and the athletic field ends up three to four feet below that parking lot. Then, in this area right here, it rises almost 20 feet, 20-plus or minus feet above, so you have a really steep slope that's leading down to that field. And then you have the series of development up above. So you have what is a lot of drainage coming down off that. Currently, the design was to swale around, which exists. Over time, this field was built in around 2003, 2004, has...that swale has developed, it's filled with silt, it's overgrown, so that swale needs to be reestablished. So as part of this drainage problem, as we reestablish the drainage for this field, is to reestablish this swale. Additionally, over time, some of the characteristics in between these two properties has changed and channelized and adding drainage specifically in this midfield area. So again, addressing that area and investigating with both the DPW, Par Corporation, who is an engineer that we work with, is that this system has collapsed and failed and filled with silt, needs to be reestablished, to reestablish the use of this field, so that this field can be used on a more regular basis.
So again, I don't think we probably presented quite that much detail, especially not with the visual in the last meeting, but again, in that meeting, for those that were here, there was a lot of new questions raised, especially around the drainage, and could it really be addressed? So that's what we want to address tonight. I'm not going to be able to cover it all, nor do I have the technical expertise to. So what I'm going to do is cover a few of the questions that were raised, a basic, you know, response to it. But what I encourage you is that when we're done here with our five minutes, I think we're probably already done, presentation is, please ask questions. Ask questions of Art, ask questions of the DPW, and so we can provide you with the additional information that you may need. I also encourage you, if there's other items that happen to come up tonight in this discussion that may not be directly related to the field, I also encourage you to ask us questions about that as well. So just very quickly, you know, again, there was a vote on Calander Field. Why are we back? Simply, we have additional and new information that we could bring to the town in light of the new questions that were raised that evening. I think we already talked about the drainage. I'm looking at the Q and A that we handed out at the front. There's always questions about the drainage, which Art has started to address, but specifically about the hill erosion next to Calander Field, that's actually on South...that land in between that Art was referring to is South Row Open Land Foundation property. So the question was, well, what's the real source of that erosion? Following additional site visits after town meeting, the engineer in DPW confirmed that the erosion is actually largely due to a channel, a man-made channel that's been dug into the land privately owned by South Row Open Land Foundation. And so the channel is now catching and directing water from Carriage Hill retention basins, and this is leading to a lot of erosion on the hill lower down. So as part of this effort, the maintenance of the channel and proper direction of the water can be addressed. You know, Salf is a private entity, independent of the town of South Row, so maintenance of the existing drainage on Salf's land can either be maintained by the foundation or it can allow the town to complete the maintenance. There are some options there, and certainly, we can go into that in more detail in a few minutes. One important point, and I think this is an important one, has Carriage Hill been negligent in maintaining their detention basins? And following town meeting and additional site visits, no, they have not been negligent in maintaining their basins. I believe, and I was not part of it, but I know that there was a meeting between all interested parties, Carriage Hill, Salf, DPW, Board of Selectmen, and I hear that it was a very positive meeting. And within that meeting, again, it was confirmed that they have been doing their quarterly maintenance on those basins and sending the maintenance reports to Salf. So a positive piece of news there that we didn't have in the last meeting. Is there excessive silt or sludge in the Carriage Hill basins? Drainage pipes that are clogged that are causing the erosion issues? No. You know, the basin above Calander Field was inspected by the engineer. The silt is not impacting the basin from operating as designed, and the outlight pipe is actually clear. So the last point I'll make before opening it up to what I'm sure will be a lively discussion, to what extent can we resolve the drainage issues? And will these fixes to the field last? Can we do it and not be back here in a few short years asking for additional repairs? So again, the field was always intended and designed to collect water from the burned area above Calander Field and from the hillside for direction into the field system. The water is expected and will continue, but we can repair the drainage to manage it so the field repairs will be sustained until the next scheduled maintenance cycle. The last point I'll make is that I think we're all aligned in one thing. We want to make sure that this design can be done and that the water can be dealt with correctly before we do anything with the field. And upfront, that is the first piece of the project, that more detailed design, and that we would not proceed forward with the remainder if it confirmed anything other than what the initial design suggests. So with that, I'd like to open it up to discussion and questions.
Well, we have a short presentation in opposition. That's going to be next.
Okay.
Ms. Vaniff.
I have to make sure I have my reading glasses on and not my distance glasses. The recreation projects funded from 2014 to 18. First of all, this is not meant to show the lack of support for this community. If anything else, this community has supported recreation over the years, if not over the last five years. These slides are to show that. So bear with me. I'll try to read through these real quick for you. 9/11 field replacement. It was done at an annual town meeting, even though it was a petition, citizen's petition. The approval was in 2014, Article 29, for $600,000. $185,112 came out of the revolving fund. Now, why is this different? The borrowing on this was done from the revolving fund, which was in agreement with DCR. So any funds received for the field directly went to the borrowing. The tennis court recreation project, again, that was done at an annual town meeting with CPC funds. That is a surcharge on your tax bill. You might not see it on the borrowing, but you will see it on your tax bill. That project has been completed. Chote Lights at Woodward, also an annual town meeting. It was funded at $195,000 worth of borrowing. It came in...it was underestimated as far as what its true cost would be. $147,000 came out of recreation. It was completed this May. Tennis Court resurfacing, again, CPC funds. It's completed. Fay Playground Restoration. The estimate was $92,000. As of now, we've spent $349,000. It's still not finished. Mooney Field, annual town meeting, $220,000. A redesign was requested by the DPW. Richardson's Court, a redesign also requested by the DPW, an annual town meeting warrant article for $153,000. Fay Basketball Court, annual town meeting approval of 2017, $68,736. The current balance is... The current balance is still $52,000, awaiting on paving bid to determine the funding. I'm not going to go into the Trotter Track to P3 Field, we just approved that at a recent town meeting. There is a common thread here. One, the estimates that we receive at town meeting are not accurate. Second, we are not completing these projects as quickly as we like because we're leaning too much on DPW. And now they're picking up the additional costs within their budgets. And the third thing, each of these projects are unique to themselves. My concern with Lundblad Field, which I spoke before, is the fact that the community at large has not been part of this process, even though it's been on agendas at the Recreation Commission, at times in front of the Board of Selectmen, but the neighbors of Carriage Hill, the neighbors of Calander, the neighbors on Meadow Lane have not been part of this discussion. It is a bigger problem than we think. Salf owns the adjoining piece of property. I do not want to go into a legal issue with the others that have bought this property. I hope that you vote no, this is not the process that we want to use for special town money, town meeting for funding articles which could be funded at an annual town meeting. Thank you.
Mrs. Vaniff, can you put the last slide up?
Thank you, Mrs. Vaniff. Actually, sir, you read the mic first, go ahead.
Jen Hanson, 14 Richards Road. Mr. Moderator, could I request that the Chair of the Recreation Commission respond to this presentation, please?
Well, if the Chair of the Recreation Commission wants to go to a mic, certainly they can be heard. I'm not sure what you mean by respond.
I guess I'd like to understand her position in response to this.
Okay, well, we'll have, that person's available, we can do that, but in the queue. Ms. Bragio is next.
Shall I go here, go up there?
Wherever you like, ma'am. Wherever there's a mic.
I'll try to keep this very brief, but I do feel like we...
No, ma'am. Ms. Bragio is next, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry about any confusion. Stay there, stay there, keep your spot.
Good evening. My comments are for myself as a board member, they don't represent the full board. As we all know, citizen's petitions are legally, are a legally allowed method of getting a warrant article before town meeting. I support citizen's petitions except when it's a budget capital-related funding item because we have a capital plan in place. My concern is, the goal and message of Selectmen should be consistent, and we should always impress upon our departments, our boards, committees, and commissions to work in the spirit of cooperation, collaboration, and being a team, working together by the same standards. I worry that what this does is now having our departments and boards competing for citizen's petition for funding items. At the end of the day, we need to follow a process that allows us all to work together with fairness to all requests and needs, but from the same playing field. Especially in this case, I have concerns that when one specific group is benefiting by bypassing a process that everyone else is expected to use. I now ask if going forward, will other boards, commissions, committees, and departments subvert the capital process in favor of instant funding by a citizen's petition and a vote of town meeting? We are going down uncharted territory and need to be careful of the precedent that we as a town meeting are setting. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, it is our responsibility to set the processes that will best protect and serve the taxpayers and that are fair to all. I worry if this is going to be the trend on capital items, that the stability of the budget process and the AAA bond rating going forward, that our finance team has done a tremendous job of getting and maintaining, will suffer. To be clear, this article in recreation has used a process that's available with this article coming forward, and it is their right to do so. My comments are directed at the process and the stance that this town meeting is going to take going forward for fairness to all departments that wait their turn in the capital process. Thank you.
Sir, you are next, and then we'll go over here.
Attila Hertzeg for Jacobs Lane, I'm speaking on behalf of Southborough Open Land Foundation. I just wanted to make a few comments regarding this proposal. It has more to do, we don't have an opinion either way regarding whether you should or shouldn't vote for fixing the field. What we'd like to comment on is that we, as a private land trust, we, we take land, we have land that we take care of, we are the guardians of open land purely for the benefit of all residents of Southborough. And we try to maintain those to the best of our ability with the, with the idea that we want all those who live close by to those properties to have access and enjoyment of those properties. With respect to the property that is between Calander Field and Carriage Hill, interestingly enough, 90% or more of that property's enjoyment is by the folks who live at Carriage Hill. So we're very excited that they actually walk that property, utilize it, and are, they are our eyes and ears of what goes on on the property. Having said that, we want to make a comment regarding the water that is, water and silt that is coming down to the Calander Field. This has been going on for more than 10 years now. The recreation group is now intersecting this problem with Salf that has been going on for a long time. So there's a long history to this, it's been the evolving story, and we more or less all felt that we were going to wind up in this spot sooner or later, and here we are. It is our belief that observing this problem over a 10-year period, there, there's unfortunately, the catch basins that catch the water coming off the Carriage Hill, which is on Salf property, is, it's now filled with silt. And this is just probably a natural occurrence that happens when you build something over a 20-something year period, sooner or later, it requires significant maintenance. Now, the fine folks at Carriage Hill have in fact been doing maintenance, and they've been doing a fine job from the looks of it, but that's not the issue here. The issue is that the basin itself is filling with silt. And what is happening is, it does not have the ability to hold all the water. So case in point, there's a comment here that following the additional site reviews, et cetera, et cetera, it says that Salf had built a, or dug a trench in the property. Actually, we didn't dig a trench, that's the water spilling over the basin, creating the little mini Grand Canyon on that property. We have been trying to flag this as an issue for more than 10 years, so there is no trenches being built by anybody, that is just happening. So what we're trying to convey to everyone here is, the money that is being requested here to fix this is truly a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage. We have an issue where we can put as many pipes and all of that in there, assuming that was even agreeable, but the problem is still there. We have an excess amount of water that the basins cannot, no longer hold, and it will continue coming over the top of the basins and bringing the silt along with it. So we would ask that this is not something that is easily fixed, and Ms. Vaniff very, was very articulate in saying, this could be a lot more money than we think, because that is not something you can just throw in a few pipes and hope that it all goes away. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lavell.
Okay, I'll try to keep this brief because we're going in a lot of different directions. So in regards to the last comment I guess made about the basins, I would, I think there's been a few site visits that folks have been part of, and I would like either the DPW or the consultant or someone who's been there to comment on that, because I don't think there's 100% accuracy there, nor on the channel, I think there's been different evaluations. But I'm going to leave that to those who can speak to it better than I. So very quickly, in regards to Ms. Bragio's comments on the planning process, and we've covered this at length in other forums, and we have had, despite, you know, we've given plenty of opportunities to participate, we held two public forums leading up to the last annual town, annual town meeting, we've had the Recreation Meetings Advisory, Board of Selectmen. I think we articulated why, we don't believe that we want to bring every single project forward on an article, and I think the past history that Ms. Vaniff shared shows that. We were faced with a situation that we got a new information, a study that had not existed back. We didn't come here because we just didn't want to wait, we didn't want to get in line, had nothing to do that, this wasn't about aesthetics, these are not nice-to-haves. This is maintaining town assets that are long overdue. We want to keep them safe, we want to keep them open. This is the beginning of a long process we need to go through to get on a proper maintenance cycle. So that's why we felt the urgency in this case to bring it forward. And so it's not that we don't want to cooperate, but that is why we felt it was an exception to be made, to ask the town if we could add this to the plan. We have submitted a capital plan draft and are working through that with the town administrator to start moving forward. And then very quickly, because I know that it's getting late, but I do think we need to react to the projects that were presented. The 9/11 field replacement, I think that project is a great example of a project that was run well, and I'm happy to say that today, the punch list of tasks were completed, that field was completed on budget and actually before it was targeted to, and we hope to mark this milestone with the community this summer. The tennis court restoration, I'll just add, for all the items with CPC funding, that is traditionally how a lot of these projects have been pursued in the past, and why? Because CPC funds are meant for open space, recreation, housing, and historical preservation. They're voted on by the town meeting, so clearly supported by the community. The Fay playground restoration, no, it's not done yet, and it, that's because of weather. The original bid for paving was lost because it's been a horrible spring of weather, and so therefore it had to go back out to bid, and I now think is targeted for June, completely out of the hands of recreation and DPW in that case. The Mooney Light Fields, again, CPC funds. There was a note in there about a redesign requested by DPW, and that's just clarification, and again, DPW can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're just waiting for the electrical plan. It's not that the original design was incorrect. Again, I'll hold off as well on commenting on those projects that were just approved at the last town meeting, but I think that what this shows is, this town supports recreation. And none of that changes the fact that our fields are in a severe state of disrepair, and we need to start taking action. And if we just wait another year, we're just kicking, you know, the problem down the road instead of starting to address it now. Thank you.
Go right here, sir.
Whitney Beals, 10 Chestnut Hill Road and current president of Southborough Open Land Foundation. There's been some innuendo at other meetings that Salf somehow is responsible for the excess runoff on the slope that goes down to Calander Field. That's simply not true. Before Carriage Hill Estates was built, there were no erosion channels coming down that hill. So there's only one source of the problem, and that's Carriage Hill. My personal opinion is that the drainage system was underdesigned, and it may not be being maintained properly. I understand that the meeting that took place last week, or the week before, I forget, Mr. Hertz, when that actually happened, I know you attended that meeting, but during that meeting, the landscape firm that apparently is doing whatever maintenance is taking place asked for the drawings of the drainage basins so that it could establish the correct height or depth of what the drainage basin should be. So if the landscape firm is asking that question, I really wonder if it is, knows what proper maintenance is supposed to be. I think as a board, Salf would need to review any drainage plans, or any plans for additional drainage installation on Salf land before we could just sort of lightly say, sure, we're in favor of whatever those drainage improvements might be. I don't think anybody on the Salf board is opposed to fixing the situation, but we need to know what that fix is going to be before we can take a vote on that. It's probably going to require an easement, and that Salf would have to grant that easement to the town. I'm also troubled by the fact that there was some talk just this evening about asking the DPW to do the maintenance. I think that's a gift to the folks of Carriage Hill. They purchased homes up there knowing that in fact they were responsible for maintaining the infrastructure, including those drainage basins. They need to do it. Thank you.
Ms. Latrell.
Mimi Latrell, 19 Oregon Road, speaking as a private citizen, not as a member of the planning board. I was concerned by a comment made in the presentation in which the presenter said that they would do the drainage study first, do the engineering, and if it was determined that that, they couldn't fix the drainage and that field could not remain dry for a majority of the year, then they wouldn't move further. But at that point, our taxes have already gone up, they already did the big ask for the whole entire project. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more prudent to come back at a later town meeting, ask for the engineering study on the drainage, to figure out the situation with the drainage first, and then proceed with the repairs to the field. Then would only be out the drainage study and not the cost of the entire project. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
Jim McCarthy, Shipper Farm Lane. Question for the chair lady over here. Are the sports organizations participating in the cost of this?
Go ahead.
No, this is, we're requesting the money to be borrowed on behalf of the town. Or I shouldn't say that, we are requesting the money, which I believe the town would borrow through a five-year bond.
Is there any reason why the, the sports organizations don't participate in the maintenance of the fields?
They actually do. So all of the user fees that we collect from the sports associations go back to the town's general fund, which is also used by the DPW in the maintenance of the fields. So...
I'm a supporter, I'm a supporter of youth sports for sure, my kids have participated in baseball, soccer, lacrosse, basketball. I was involved in Southborough Little League, and every year, Little League on their own puts in between $15,000 and $25,000 for maintenance of their own fields. And I just think that the sports league should be participating in the cost of this renovation.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up, if I may.
Well, I, I really can't, I mean, I am going to skip Mr. Hertz because he's gone once, but I, I don't know what you, what is that?
Mr. Moderator, if there's an interest in this gathering to see pictures of what we mean by the basins filled with silt and the damage, we have many pictures that we took showing that that in fact is the case, and we went there when the water was at its, at its, not at its peak, but thereafter, from the, the snow melt in the spring. So this could show where the source of our issue is coming from, and perhaps for those who may be on the fence as to what is the real issue at hand here, we do have some pictures that might help.
All right, I'll hold off on that for now, but thank you. Let's go over here, Mr. Rose.
Howard Rose, Tubematri. I'm just starting with looking for some clarification, is this $248,000 the entire cost of the project, or just the consulting fees to design it? I thought from the last meeting that that was just a 10% number, and there was a much larger number. Am I confused with another project, or is this the entire number?
Ms. Lavell, can you answer that very quickly?
It's the opinion of probable cost on the entire cost of the project plus a 20% contingency.
Okay, I guess I share Mrs. Latrell's concern that without doing the study first, how we even know what that number's going to be, there's not a good history of that. It's also my understanding, and I'd like some clarification from the consultant, I thought the field was actually part of the drainage solution, that it was designed to actually take that water. actually take that water. And if that's the case, why are we putting so much money into a field that we know is designed to flood? Someone can speak to that, please.
All right, very quickly on that, if we, is he still here? Thirty seconds, please. And then I'm going to go, I'm going to go to you, sir, and then you, ma'am, and Ms. Vaniff, and then I'm inclined to wrap things up. Go ahead.
So that field is designed to accept that water into that basin there, as the field exists today, but it's also to move that field around and out through a drainage structure that sits on the southwest corner, out of that field as well.
All right, sir.
Barry Rubenstein, 95, Carriage Hill Circle. I just need to respond to some of the comments that Salf has made about somehow Carriage Hill's responsibility for this problem. I think Town Council alluded to this at the annual meeting, that when the community was built, there was no obligation placed on Carriage Hill to maintain those drainage basins. Carriage Hill has no legal responsibility to maintain those drainage basins. Nonetheless, at some point, Salf came to the community and asked us if we would do it. We agreed to do it. Three times a year, our groundskeeper maintains the basins, writes a report with pictures, and sends it to Salf. At the annual meeting, Salf said, well, they did it for a while, but they haven't done it for several years. Apparently, they don't look at their own records. So that's point number one. We spend two to three thousand dollars a year maintaining those basins, and we come here and we get criticized as if somehow this problem is all our creation. And I think it's just people need to think about things and understand, our community, Carriage Hill Field, we're citizens of Southborough. We tried to work with Salf, we tried to help the community, and we don't seem to get much appreciation for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Right over here.
Hi, Desiree Azalina, 15 Clifford. I agree, I think it's unfair to blame the people that live in the houses on Carriage Hill. I think there should be some accountability for the developers who made the plans and, you know, now here we are left with the mess. Can I call, move to vote, or whatever?
You can't do it off the microphone, you know, adjoining a comment. You have to do it separately. I am going to go to Mrs. Vaniff next.
All right, thank you.
If I could have Ms. Galligan on behalf of the town to answer this question, please.
What's the question?
The question is, the field is under a storm water management plan. You're disturbing over 50% of the area, which would require you to initiate another storm water management plan with DEP, I believe. That's why I'm suggesting that it be held off in the design, the engineering done first. Am I correct?
There is no storm water management plan specifically on that field. It acts as a basin for the Carriage Hill development, but just that one basin that you can see in that picture that they had. Otherwise, it's taking the hill, all the water from the hill, it's taking water from Meadow Lane. But as far as the actual work for the drainage system, that needs to be done anyway. It silted up before the hill was established, so I don't...
Karen, the field itself is under a storm water management plan, according to the plans that are filed in the town hall that dated 1999.
It's part of the storm water system, but that predates the storm water management plan systems.
So you would have to reapply, and I would believe the standards would be much different today.
The field itself, to drain the field and to handle that water, it's a system that already exists, so it shouldn't be an issue as far as that goes. We want to move the water better. The basin up at the top, that is on top of the hill from Carriage Hill, it's meant to actually, it fills and the pipe is at the level of the bottom of the basin. It's not full of silt, that one basin. I don't know what's going on the rest of it. Carriage Hill has been maintaining it, the pipes are open. It will hold water, and it does then come down, it does come down in a channel, and that's what's different now than it used to be. And whether or not that was a dug channel, or it's just cut in the slope, it's been maintained, and we just need to capture it at the point source now, because it used to come across the land. And now it's actually coming to point source, and we need to capture that. We can capture it on our own land, we can capture it on Salf land if that's the case.
Thank you.
So, sir, I'm going to ask, with all respect, if there's anything new you'd like to add that we haven't already heard tonight on this item?
Yes, one minor thing.
Please go ahead.
Howard Anderson, One Meadow Lane. I knew Peter Calander, and that's the way you pronounce his name, and I knew when he started to talk about developing the property. And he told me very clearly that that field property was going to be gifted to the town, but the caveat was that that was going to be the retention basin for the development. And that's exactly what it is. There's a moat, dry most of the time, but there's a moat around that field, and that's the first catching of the water. But if some people know the area, there are catch basins that are higher elevation than the field elevation. And that's because on a hundred-year flood, that field will be under two feet of water or more. You can do all the improvements you want, you can clean out the basins till the cows come home, but that field someday is going to be underwater. And it can happen more frequently because we all know that climate change is happening. So, good luck with that field, and whatever you spend could be washed away in a very short period of time.
Okay. Something new, ma'am? Something we haven't heard, one way or the other?
I just would like a point of clarity, Sally Waters, 17 Wood Street. The gentlemen from Carriage Hill said that they have absolutely no legal responsibility for maintaining the basins, which they have an easement on Salf property to have. Is that true at the Town Council?
Okay, we'll have Town Council address it briefly. I don't think we're going to solve the legal question tonight, but give it your best.
That subdivision does have legal responsibilities under the original permits, and now that I'm speaking to that, we never indicated that in the last meeting that Salf had any responsibility. As a matter of fact, I think I affirmatively indicated they were really more a victim than a proponent of the issue. So yes, when that subdivision was built, and let me tell you, about 12 years ago, I had the responsibility of going through 500 pages of engineering data to determine that at the time it was built, it was accurately constructed, but that by contemporary standards, it's not a good design. However, bottom line is that that subdivision, Carriage Hill, the developers originally, and now the owners, had that responsibility continuing, and what I'm hearing is that they are meeting that responsibility currently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Okay, ma'am, you'll be last.
Okay, Dorian Jacinski, 33, Presidential Drive. I am the vice chair of advisory, but I am speaking as a citizen tonight. I have a letter here from John Woodsman III, who was the town engineer from 2010, and in that letter, that was copied to Karen Galligan, the superintendent of public works, Jean Kitchen, our town administrator, Doreen Ferguson, the recreation director, and to Salf. In this letter, there are some points I have here. It says, "The Southborough Department of Public Works would like to call your attention to the damage that is occurring to town-owned property due to a failure of a storm water basin installed on Carriage Hill property. Substantial erosion of that hill that sleeps down to Calander Field," that references this, and then it says, "The concentrated flow from the basin has caused substantial erosion to the abutting Southborough Open Land Foundation property, and this erosion continues onto the town of Southborough's Calander Field property. The hill bordering the field has suffered erosion, which is damaging the stability of the hillside, and depositing silt at the toe of the slope at the edge of the playing field. We have included for your use a map on the area in question." Then he goes on to say, "That we require that Carriage Hill Condominium Trust take steps to immediately repair the failed basin and the damage it has caused to the Southborough property. We ask that a plan for the repair of the hillside damage be prepared and submitted to our office for our review and approval. We also ask that all storm water basins that have been installed as part of the Carriage Hill development be inspected immediately, and preventive maintenance measures and/or repairs be made as necessary." So, Carriage Hill can claim that they're not supposed to be maintaining those basins, but the erosion is not caused from Salf. The problem is caused from the water at the top of the hill. And if we, as a town, are not responsible enough to take care of the actual problem, we are never going to fix this field correctly. The town needs the field, but we need to fix the problem, not Band-Aid it, not stick pipes in somebody else's property. We need to address the actual problem. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a test, isn't it? Go ahead, please.
Jessica Devine, One Pine Cone Lane. I just have a quick question, because at the town meeting, I thought you said that we wouldn't spend all this money if a study said it wasn't feasible? Is that still what we would do, or, because I think people were making the point that we could lose all this money, so I just would like some clarification. Thanks.
Quickly, please.
Yeah, I think we all want the same thing. And I don't know, the very part, next part of this project, the initial phase, would be the design work, where the closer look would be at the drainage, what we can do to confirm that we can do it. And if anything came back that said we could not do it with the money that's been allocated, then at that point, we would need to stop, and we'd know more about the problem and what the alternatives would be to address it. But I reiterate, our consultant, the DPW, they believe that we can address this issue. We can maintain the town's property, and therefore that's why we ask to bring it forward. Let us take that next step and get more information and get the engineering so we can all make educated decisions on whether or not to then subsequently move forward with the field repairs.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move the vote, please, Louise Barron.
Yeah, the practical effect, really. I appreciate the motion. We're there, we're there. Nobody else is at a mic. So, you know, I'll make that call. We'll hold off on that motion because we are at the vote. This is a borrowing article, and it does require a two-thirds vote, because the funding is for borrowing. So, all in favor of Article Four, please raise your cards. All opposed. Okay, I declare a two-thirds majority, the motion fails. And finally, we move to Article Five. Ms. Lavalt. Folks, if you're going to get up, that's fine, but please do so as quietly as you can. Appreciate your courtesy.
So, that's unfortunate, and the real reason why I feel like we need a Saturday town meeting. All right, so I'm up here, I'm going to try to keep it quick.
You need to put your motion on the floor, ma'am.
Yep. So, I'm moving that the town vote to amend Chapter 41 of the Code of the Town of Southborough, Massachusetts, entitled Town Meetings by striking in its entirety Section 41-1, date and time of annual town meeting, and replacing it with the following language. "The annual town meeting, for the consideration of all business other than the election of town officers or other matters to be determined by ballot, shall be held during the week in March designated by the selectmen as Town Meeting Week. This meeting shall be held on a Saturday, commencing at 1:00 p.m. and recess no later than 5:00 p.m. and not later. In the event that all articles in the warrant have not been acted on, the meeting shall reconvene at 7:00 p.m. on that Saturday and recess no later than 11:00. If all articles are not acted on by that time, adjournment of the session shall be to the following Monday night at 7:00, and then to each succeeding night at 7:00 p.m. until completion of the warrant. In the event that all articles in the warrant have not been acted on by the end of the day Thursday night session, the meeting shall stand adjourned to a time and date agreeable to the meeting. In the event of a secular or other holiday during the town meeting week, the session shall be adjourned to the next night that shall be agreeable to the meeting by majority vote." I'll keep this quick so we can get to discussion.
Hold on. Receive a second. Okay, the motion's been seconded. You want to speak to it briefly?
Yes, and if anyone's kind of curious where a lot of that wording comes from, it's largely based upon the wording within the bylaws of Westbro, who has actually taken this step about a decade ago. So very quickly, as long as there's town meeting, as long as we all have to show up to raise our hand to actually have a vote, there's never going to be a fair and equitable solution here. There will not be a time, we will not be able to find a time that some group of Southborough citizens will be excluded, which makes this, you know, a tough discussion. We have statistics that I think we can share around Southborough's town meeting attendance if interested, but plain and simple, we should have more representation. Look around you. And by the ease at which we collected signatures on this petition, it's clearly an interest by more people than being able to attend, and it's time to try to change. I know that there's many of you that disagree, but it's just, quite frankly, not possible for many citizens to make a Monday evening meeting where there'd be work obligations, a commute home from Boston, an inability to drive at night, and then, of course, people with children or other dependents. It becomes even more impossible when a meeting extends to the late hours, hours many people typically aren't even normally awake and/or face getting up early in the morning, and certainly don't have their kids up, like mine are right now in the gym. And they were the last time, and it was awful, and it was awful for many days after that. And, while it's funny, it's also their health, so it's a concern there. So the alternative to both me and my husband, or my kids not being here, would be me or my husband not being here, and we'd be essentially giving up our vote. So this isn't a new concept. There's towns that have been doing it for 30-plus years. Our neighboring town, Westbro, I mentioned, has been doing it for 10. In some initial analysis, I looked at 15 towns already doing this, and I reached out to a lot of the town clerks, and all of them had positive feedback. I'll just say, this is not going to solve the issue completely. I fully appreciate that. There's other obligations that are going to get in the way. The meeting may still go along, but at least we've opened the door to more of the community members to be able to attend at least part of the session. And we can offer babysitting. During hours, we can actually more easily get sitters, and kids should not be sleeping. And we can make this, and I like this idea a lot, we can make this a community event. We can introduce activities for the kids, we can expose them to the concept of civic duty. We can incent people to want to come together with us and with their community and be part of these key decisions being made. And if it does go along that first day, and hopefully we can get to a point where we keep it to one day, well, then at least it's a Saturday night. So I'll stop there, ask for your consideration, as I truly believe this could transform our government and our community. I know that issues drive attendance. We know that. We know that communication is absolutely an issue in the town and in getting people to town meeting. But equally impactful are the significant groups of citizens that are left out of being able to attend. So again, with that, I will leave it there and open it up to what I'm sure is going to be another healthy dialogue. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Hegarty, Town Clerk, 14 Maplecrest Drive. In preparation for this meeting, I reviewed attendance figures for town meetings, and kind of interesting numbers. I looked at...
Sorry?
No problem. I reviewed attendance figures from 1965, '75, '85, and '95. In those four ranges, the median participation of registered voters to attend a town meeting was 13%. So over those, I just looked at the annual town meeting the first night, just to keep everything the same. So over those four 10-year marks, 13% of the eligible registered voters actually attended a town meeting. So then I went back, and we looked at the last 10 years of annual town meetings. Again, to keep apples to apples, we looked at the first night, from 2009 to 2018. Now, the difference from 1965 to 2018 is that the population in Southborough has more than tripled. It's three times, 3.2 times as many voters. Yet, the participation rate, again, the number of registered voters who actually come to town meeting, has decreased by more than 70%. Only 4.1% of the eligible voters actually, that's the median of the last 10 years, actually come to town meeting. Again, from '65 to '95, 13%. The last 10 years, it's only 4%. Now, let me just give a little commentary, because I wasn't here in '65, I wasn't a registered voter then, and I went to live in Southborough. But just to give a little context of what Southborough was like with 2,259 registered voters, when you go back and look at the old town records... voters, when you go back and look at the old town records, town meeting would have more than 50 articles. And it would last many nights. Sometimes it'd have to try 10 nights to have quorums to resolve all these issues. And in 1965, one of the articles was to decide whether we should spend $250 to buy a loam for the rural cemetery. All right? So it was a different kind of Southborough back then. So, I just throw these facts out, and just as a common sense thing, I don't have any hair in my head, but frankly, look around the hall here. And you don't have to do any math just to figure out, you know, who's above age 60 and who's below age 60. And it's 10:15, 10:10, it's an early night for a town meeting right now. If you want to know who, just look around. Look around among yourselves and just gauge who participates and why.
Thank you. Ms. Asselbeekian.
Desiree Asselbeekian, 137 Woodland Road. I have my issues with Saturday, and I'm not going to address that. Everybody can make their own choice of whether they want to be here on an evening during the week, or potentially, an evening on a Saturday if you don't get through the only four-hour session, the first session. My issue is with March. And I was an elected member to both the Southborough School Committee, K-8, and Elgonquin for six years. It's been a little while since that was my capacity, but the school departments take up close to 70 percent of our municipal budget. And March is an extremely poor time to be voting on that amount of money because Chapter 70 figures are not set in stone. The school department itself is still finalizing budgets in March because of that fact, because we're waiting for state approvals. And I knew at the time, when I served on the school committee, it was, we were always very much up against the clock in terms of getting a March deadline in so that we could print the actual town warrant. So I see that there's recommendations from the selectmen and advisory, or, well, the selectmen not to support, advisory says no position. But I'm wondering if the school committee has considered this warrant article, considering that the budgetary ramifications and having their budget particularly ready for a March deadline would be problematic if we changed from an April to a March? Not to mention that Northborough still does have its town meeting, of which we share money relative to Elgonquin, the last week in April. So again, I'm wondering if the school committee has taken a position on this article, considering that they really have the most amount of money in the game when it comes for us to vote on a budget?
Just out of curiosity, do we have a school committee member here? Yes, okay. Well, if it's a quick answer, have you taken a position? Why don't we just get that on the floor?
No, I am brand-new to the school committee, so I can't speak intelligently about that. Paul, go. Oh, yeah, and Paul over there, too.
Paul Desmond, 5 Pine Cone Lane, Chairman of the Southborough School Committee. No, we have not taken a position on this. As for Chapter 70, you know, we don't really count on the state for much in terms of, you know, getting money at a specific date, so I'm not sure how much of an issue that is. Everything else, you just have to roll back the clock, and, you know, start things earlier, I guess. Would it be a challenge? Probably, but could it be done? Yeah, I think so. But to me, it's, well, I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, you were next.
Thank you. Lisa Brascio, 13 Oregon Road. Sorry.
I don't know if it's you or me. I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd like to think it's my electric personality, but speaking as a private citizen, I just actually have a question for Mrs. Lavalt on this article. I'm not necessarily, I'm kind of on the fence on it as a board of selectmen member. I didn't support it, I can tell you that. But one of the questions I have is, I don't know if this accomplishes what you're looking for as far as babysitting. Most town meetings tend to go to two nights anyway, so if you start in the afternoon, 1:00 to 4:00, you're still coming back, and you're still going to have the same babysitting challenges you would have at a typical town meeting from 7:00 to 10:00. That's just a question, and I don't know if you've considered that, and if you have, then, thank you.
Yes, I mean, we have, and you're right. I think there's a lot of other efforts underway to try to get our town meetings more contained. I know the moderator has taken a lot of steps this year, and I hope we continue to do that. So no, as I admitted before, it doesn't solve the problem completely, but it does open up a window of four hours, which would represent the first night, a Monday night town meeting, during the day at which at least a greater population can attend. So it's a step in the right direction. And so therefore, we would be able to get babysitters. I don't know if you saw, we had a really hard time getting babysitters into the gym. We have a hard time getting babysitters to stay till 11:00. I don't think there's probably enough babysitters in town to, you know, handle all the children, so I don't think it solves the problem completely, not at all. But I do want to, I know I said this before, I think we could make it even more than just babysitting. We could truly make it a community event to attract people.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Devine.
Hi, Jessica Devine, 1 Pine Cone Lane. I really urge you to vote in favor of this, and there's a few reasons why. One is, I'm spending a fortune to be here tonight, and not everybody can do that. So we are excluding a segment of our town who economically cannot afford babysitting and do not want to have their children here until 11 o'clock at night. So that's one section of the town that we're excluding. Another reason is, you know, I just ran for school committee, and happily, I won. And what I kept hearing from people over and over was, man, I wish we got more young people like you running. You look around this room, people like me, like my age, like people with children are not going to get more involved in town government if they feel like they can't even get to town meeting. And having a town meeting on a Saturday, when we can get babysitters more easily because high school kids aren't, you know, I know most high school kids in my neighborhood are not able to babysit this late on a weeknight. In my neighborhood, we talked about getting all the kids at a couple houses and having the babysitters outside to play with them on a Saturday afternoon. That's a heck of a lot easier than a weeknight. So, I urge you to think about that. And then, the other thing is that we have people in town who do not want to drive at night. And those people are excluded unless they get rides or whatever. I think this, having it on a Saturday, will really open it up to more people in town. Thanks.
So, yes, Larry Jocinski, 33 Presidential Drive.
Brian, you're next.
There are many things, I think, that can be explored to improve town meetings, and I know a day has been picked, Saturday. It could easily have been Sunday. Why would we not pick Sunday? Because of the Christian religion. I would think we should be cognizant of Saturday, as that is the Sabbath for the Jewish religion. And if we're going to schedule something on a Saturday, we should be considering all religions.
Thank you. Mr. Shea was next.
So, thank you, Paul. So, our board did vote tonight unanimously not to support this, and I just wanted to point out, one of the reasons why we did, in September of 2017, a report was prepared by the Town Meeting Review Committee. It was a group that reported to the Board of Selectmen and the moderator to study the statistics of town meeting attendance, and really, in an effort to see what could be done to increase attendance. And some of the conclusions that came from that was that the data analysis did not support or did not indicate that there would be a significant difference in attendance if it were on a Saturday. And that was based on the study and the numerous efforts of the outreach that that committee made. The survey responses indicated a status quo for the annual town meeting schedule and the quorum. There were some comments made to implement procedures to speed up the pace of meetings, which I think the moderator and town clerk have incorporated some of those changes to do that. And really, it concludes with the final thought, that it really is the issues that drive attendance, not so much the day that the meetings are held. Jim went through the statistics for town meeting attendance. We all know, in the last couple of years, we've had special town meetings on Tuesday nights where we've had 700 people attend. And we did, because the issue was so great. The education was made to inform people about the issues. They took interest in it, and they come out in numbers for that. So, I just wanted to make that point, that there was a study done recently, finalized in September 2017, and the conclusion of that report was to continue with the status quo. And that weighed heavily in our board's decision not to support this article.
Thank you. Right here.
Hi, Dan Primack, 3 Powder Mill Lane. I respect the study, I do respect data, but I'll also say, I came to the first town meeting. I have a seven-year-old. She was in babysitting. We didn't want to pay for babysitting that night. It almost felt like a weird poll tax, and we also didn't have an available babysitter. So I came to the first town meeting. I stayed for three hours. I had to leave. So, it might be that the issues decided, there were issues I wanted to vote on, but I didn't get to stay, and I'm not the only one. There were a lot of people like that. I've stayed tonight, my wife has stayed tonight. Our kid is miserable right now, just down the hall, but we're doing it really for this vote, which amazingly, was scheduled last. I'll assume that was a procedural thing, but it is ironic. I really urge you to do this. I have a lot of friends who have kids in this town who cannot come to these. And candidly, the Tuesday one, we don't start voting until 8:00. That's my kid's bedtime, so that's when the first vote happens, God, let alone the ninth. I really ask, you vote in favor tonight so that we can have a more representative group and a larger group. And the numbers he showed, the numbers are down. Let's do something to try to raise them.
I have to go over here, ma'am.
Louise Barron, I'd like to move the vote, please.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on. I haven't, give me a second. I don't think we're quite there yet.
I think we're there yet.
I understand that, ma'am, but I, I'm up here.
It's, I know, I know, Mr. Moderator, but it's 10:25 articles. I think it's enough.
We're gonna go a little longer on this one. Mr. Butler.
John Butler, 4 Davis Road. I'm sorry to prolong this, but I, I think that we shouldn't leave broken things broken. It's not, it's not, we're in a point at which it's unhealthy to have this percentage participation in this form. And I began volunteering for the town when I was 31. I had an abundant, wonderful abundance of young children at the time, but I think in an act of generosity at this point, we should see if we can do something and try it. And so, I'm gonna vote for this, and I would hope that you do, just to see if we, when we see something that's becoming broken, we try to fix it. And it may not work, but we should try. Thank you.
Thank you. Right over here.
Jessica Devine, 1 Pine Cone Lane.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My eyes are not, they're not all there at this hour, so I can't let you go again. We're gonna, we're gonna...
Wait, I, I'm sorry, can I point out one thing that I feel like is important for people to know?
Then hang in there, and we'll get back to you. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were telling me not to...
Robert Reeder, 4 Blendenwich Drive. Quickly, one, I just have to say, I'm a little disappointed. This was pulled from Westborough, there's other towns that do this, and I haven't heard a single person from our town speak to, we spoke to those towns to find out what their attendance is. I do data, I'm analyt, I do analytics. If we have other towns with a Saturday town meeting, we should have said, what's your attendance? And what has happened? The other thing that hasn't been brought up, between working and commuting, you're asking me on top of an 11- to 12-hour day to come debate important issues and stay up this late. Please, can we try it on a Saturday when I'm fresh and when there's more people here and we can actually maybe make better decisions?
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go, not Ms. Devine, the next person, please.
Wait, I'm sorry, why, why can't I go?
Because you've gone already, and we're gonna have people who haven't gone yet go, and then we will come back around.
Okay.
I just want to say, Carla Sowers, Valley Road. And my husband and I come here every year to town meeting, and we look around, and I just kind of sigh, because it's always the same people that come, and it's very small amount of the people here, and there are no young people here. And if we're going to attract young people to our community, we have to make them be able to be a part of our community. I really am bothered by your acceptance of the status quo, and I wanted to ask, who was involved in this survey? Because I've been here for 40 years, and no one ever surveyed me or any of my friends who live in Southborough on the survey about when you want town meeting. I don't think it's right to be content with a status quo that looks like this. This is not a way to run the town. You need to get the younger people involved so that we will attract more young people here and build our new community. Thank you.
Ma'am, right here.
Hi, Beth Mello, 14 Winchester Street. I just wanted to clarify something because my understanding of the report that was given is very different than the report that we heard summarized. I understand that the committee didn't recommend moving annual town meeting to Saturdays. It actually recommended moving the next special town meeting to Saturdays, and that didn't happen, for whatever reason. But their findings were actually not that moving to Saturdays, what they said was, looking at other small towns like ours, the participation on Saturdays was extraordinarily higher versus about 4% on weekdays. On a Saturday, it was 8%. It was the highest that they found when they looked at other communities that did it on Saturdays. And they also said that the reason they didn't support moving to Saturdays was because in their survey, they found that people weren't preferring Saturdays. And they weren't sure if the reason people were going to Saturdays in other towns was because it was easier to go on a Saturday, as opposed to, they preferred to go on a Saturday, which didn't really make sense to me. So, I just thought that people should have that information in case they were persuaded by the arguments of the committee.
Thank you. We'll go to the gentleman right behind you.
Thanks, Steve Phillips, 26 Main Street. I just wanted to point out that even though I have gray hair, I'm actually under 60. And just quickly, I'd like to say, everybody in this room is a busy person who made time to make it to this meeting tonight. So, I understand the desire for more participation, but I think that if you care passionately enough about an issue, you will find time to make, to make it to the meeting. And if you can't make it to the meeting, I think that says something about your level of commitment and the value of your vote. I think that, that, that we have people here who make the time, they spend the time, and I think that, that, that if this time works better for these people here, then I think that we should be comfortable sticking with the time that we can, that we're comfortable with. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee Belniak, 5 Boswell Lane. As a member of a two-parent working family, I'm fairly insulted by that comment. I travel for work. We have strong demands at our time. I'm here tonight because my husband is home with my children, and we are full supporters. Each one of us tries to get here, and we would both be here if we could. Thanks.
Ms. Devine was next, if she, okay, go ahead.
Just really quickly, want to point out that that survey, I thought it was awesome that we did it, but only 140-something people responded to it. Really tiny, tiny percentage of our town, and everybody I know didn't know about it. So, thanks.
Just on, real quick, a point of information about the survey. The survey itself, the methodology, the results, all of it, is posted on the town website, maybe in more than one place. I know it's on the moderator page, so for most of you, that'll be your first visit to it if you're interested in the survey. Okay.
And that's, that's just my last comment on the survey, and I do want to applaud the committee that did, put it together, because I think it just, it highlights the challenge with communications. But, page four, objective to research data, amongst one of the things they do was narrow the study of town meeting attendance data to 90 towns with similar municipal governments. On page five, the chart at the bottom, analysis, data shows that attendance is noticeably higher on Saturday, when most voters typically don't work.
All right, ma'am, you'll have the last word.
Marguerite Landry, 134 Deerfoot. I think we all know how we're gonna vote, so could I move the question?
Well, in fairness, I'll say the same thing. It looks like we're there. So, we won't take up that motion, but we will take up the vote. This is a general bylaw. I was surprised to learn this from my trusty sidekick here. This is just a majority vote to make this change. So, all those in favor of Article Five, please raise your cards. All those opposed. Okay, that motion carries. That takes care of our business until we have a motion to dissolve this special town meeting. So moved, do I have a second? All in favor? All right, congratulations. See you next time.